Good. Okay, so I guess we're all here, so let's just get started. Ed, if you would like to read the, I call it the preamble, but...
Sure, I'll be happy to. And I will let you know, for some reason, I'm having a hard time unmuting Chris, but...
I just did. I got myself unmuted, I think.
Thanks. Pursuant to Governor Baker's March 12, 2020 order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, General Law Chapter 30A, Section 18, and the governor's March 15, 2020, and March 23 order imposing strict limitations on the number of people that may gather in one place, this meeting at the Town of Southampton Select Board is being conducted via remote participation. No in-person attendance of members of the public will be permitted, but every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings as provided for in the order. A reminder that persons who would like to listen to or view this meeting while in progress may do so by go to zoom.us/join, hit "Join a Meeting" in the top right of your screen, type in the meeting ID of 827-5683-3086, password 922015, hit "Join," and then please be sure to mute your device when joining in. Note, to join in video meeting with cell phone, you will need to download the Zoom app from the App Store. Call-in telephone number is 646-558-8656, or by watching Public Access TV Charter, Spectrum Channel 191. In-person attendance and public comment at Select Board meetings will be suspended until further notice. If you email a written public comment before the scheduled Select Board meeting, it will be read at the Select Board meeting. If you email a written public comment after viewing something at a live televised Select Board meeting, it will be read at the next Select Board meeting. Please send your public comments via email to selectman@townofsouthampton.org. Please note that all public comments must be within the requirements of the policy on public comments listed in the open time for the public on the Select Board agenda.
Thank you, Ed. Welcome to the Select Board meeting. Today is Tuesday, the 22nd of September, and we'll begin with the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thanks. So we're going to begin with the liaison assignments. Ed sent out a list of assignments. I thought I would just start by confirming, hang on, I have it open here, confirming a few things. Do people have that handy? I'll just go through, and if anybody could just clarify, if there's any change in the frequency of the meeting. So assessors Monday, every other Monday?
Yeah, that's correct.
Board of Health, it says Tuesday. That's not actually correct. The Board of Health, lately it's been 4:30 meetings and sometimes Thursdays, so I'll just...
It's usually Thursday, is correct.
Right, I'll put Thursday, and it's every, right now, it's every two to four weeks.
And can I go back, assessors, I believe, is on Tuesdays?
Oh, I thought they were Monday.
Well, I think we've had a couple on Mondays, but you're right. I think it is normally on Tuesday. I'm sorry.
All right. Okay, I'll change this to Tuesdays. Still every other week, though, right?
Yes.
Okay, and then COA is first Wednesday in the afternoon, and then Conservation Commission is Monday, twice a month, at 6 o'clock?
Correct.
Finance Committee is Mondays, first and third, usually. Is that right, John?
Correct.
Okay. Greenway Negotiating Committee, that's intermittent. Master Plan Implementation Committee, intermittent, mostly Mondays?
It's been by weekly, but it's Mondays probably every three weeks now.
Mondays, every three weeks.
At 7 o'clock.
Every three weeks, 7:00 p.m. Okay, Norris School is fourth Wednesday, but I know that's more often lately, right, Matt?
Matt's muted.
Yes, it is. It's like every day.
That's what it seems like. What would be a reasonable frequency for me to put on here? Twice a month for now?
No, it's honestly once a week at this point. It's been once a week for months.
Okay, that's what I thought. I just was...
Often several times, often several times a week for...
Yeah, there's a lot going on there. Hampshire Regional, first Monday of the month?
Yeah, that's true, but like the situation with Norris is certainly meeting more frequently. I mean, at this point, I would put it down just to have something like once a week on average.
Yes, once a week.
Wow, okay. Open Space is, usually it's monthly on Thursday. Sometimes there's an extra meeting put in there. Planning Board, first and third Wednesdays.
Not necessarily. Planning Board, they usually do once a month. In September, they had two because you had a public meeting, but once a month.
All right, still Wednesdays, John? 6:00 or 5:30?
6:00. Oh, 7:00, 7:00.
7:00 p.m., and then it's monthly on Wednesday?
Yeah.
Hey, Reenie, sorry, I have one puny correction on Master Plan. We were talking about changing it from Mondays to Thursdays because we're running into conflicts with other meetings, so we may move to a Thursday, 7:00 meeting.
And do you anticipate this committee to keep going through the year?
We do.
Okay. Planning Board, Public Safety Building Committee is as needed, and ZBA is as needed. And then the, it says the voting committees are Committee Preservation, it's weekly, first or second of the month, but pretty much monthly. Is that still true, Chris?
Committee Preservation, yeah, they haven't met in a while, but it's usually a monthly meeting, yes.
Okay, how about PQB, Matt?
Twice a week, or twice a month.
Second Thursday or as needed?
Yeah, and also I think, correction, on the Planning Board, do they not meet every two weeks, too? I think in the summer, they had a extended schedule, no?
No, only on a special occasion do we meet more than once a month.
Okay, one time a month on Wednesday, 7:00, and then back down to PQB, it's more than once a month, Matt? It's twice a month?
Twice a month, easily twice a month.
Okay, second Thursday?
Because it's per emergency, too, so we, twice a month at a minimum.
Is it on Thursdays, Matt?
Usually.
Okay, and then Capital Committee, it says as needed, usually before the budget time. So can I just ask, does a committee think that there needs to be a liaison to all of these committees? Do we need a liaison, a ZBA, for example? Do we need a liaison to, any of them?
Well...
Well, CBA, I would think yes, because that's a special occasion. We want to stay aware of what's going on with the zoning changes.
Okay, okay.
They've met like three times over the last year, I believe.
Whenever there's a request for variance, right?
Right, exactly.
So keep that, okay, so what would people like to do? I mean, there's one possibility, just go up and down the list of us and everybody pick, you know, first choice and then whatever, or people are interested in clustering, like the schools together, open space conservation, CPC together. How would you like to do it?
Well, honestly, that was my thinking, to kind of facilitate communication and maybe even coordination, is if we could cluster them where they seem to be related, like the two schools, like assessors, planning, zoning. You mentioned, you know, CONCOM, CPC, and open space. I thought finance and capital might make a good pair with things in common. BOA, the Board of Health, and perhaps the COA, some overlap in there. And then there were some orphans, like PBB, I'm not sure where, you know, where to clump some of the other ones, Public Safety, Greenway, and Master Plan, but it makes sense to me to have some kind of a structure, but I don't know how everyone else feels.
Okay, how do other people feel about that?
Well, I guess my only concern is that in some of those clusters, there are much more active committees, and it would be maybe disproportionate, but that would be up to the, you know, the individual who did or didn't want it, except that that's okay. We could make a...
And I think we need to play to everybody's strengths if they have them in certain areas, so just to be sure. Yeah.
Yep. I think that's one thought. I mean, I have to say that when I was the liaison to Conservation Commission, I learned a tremendous amount that helped me with open space and helped me with CPC when I did that, so I see what you're saying, but I also think that there's an opportunity to, you know, I know people have told me that they're now, you know, on boards and committees and like assessors, and they didn't know that much about that, but it's just an opportunity also to learn. So how would you like to proceed? Would someone like to suggest a cluster if you want to do that, or I'm just like, Matt, I don't know how you feel, but I know that Hampshire and Norris would be a very busy liaison assignment, given what's going on lately. Does that make sense to you, or would you rather not have both of the schools?
No, I'm fine. I'm fine with having both of the schools, but it's worth, and look, I'm not trying to get sympathy here, but I'm gonna, I just have to be brutally honest with my situation right now. Like, work, two full-time kids, and full-time school, basically at home, you know, it works picking up. We're having meetings now, you know, I'm at a town meeting three times a week at this point, so it's, some things got to give for me a little bit. So I'm, so what I'm comfortable with is, you know, I've made the commitment to the Select Board, and I'm going to stick that out and do the right thing there. I'm happy to pick up the two schools, and I'm happy to hold on to the Capital Committee. As far as anything else, like that's, it just, I would be very worried about being able to do it well, and that includes the grant thing that I know that I kind of, you know, pushed and thought about, and also the PQB. Like, I just, I'm worried that I'm over, I'm way overextended here, and I have to kind of raise my hand on this, because otherwise I'm gonna do a mediocre job at pretty much everything, my work, my family, my kids. So like, I mean, I just, if I'm gonna try to do well at these things, I've gotta try to limit a little bit.
Yep, I absolutely hear you. This assignment and Select Board is a lot easier to do than not working. It's a lot of work, but it's a lot of work for everybody. I mean, every single person here, when I think back to the beginning on the Select Board, the liaison assignments, I think that we all have to sort of, you know, not feel necessarily like every single meeting, especially with these two times a week and all that. I think the most important thing is that you're available to the chair of the committee, that you're going regularly, and I mean, of those times, if I wasn't able to get to a COA meeting, I would be emailing Jenna Kane a couple days before and just say, you know, give me an update, are the minutes done yet? So I think that we have to just, I mean, we're good public servants, I think, but I also think that we have to, you know, have a life outside of what we're doing here. So, Matt, I'm putting you down for Capital, and I'm putting you down for both of the schools. Would anybody else like to suggest either a cluster or an assignment that they'd like to have?
From my part of view, I'm fine where I am, if nobody has objections to that.
Since Matt is, you know, relinquishing the personnel board, I would be willing to pick that up. I have some experience on it. I was the liaison from Finance to the PQB in the past.
Okay.
And I just want to clarify something. From the beginning of the Master Plan Implementation Committee, I sort of got it going, but then Chris has done a tremendous job of picking up. I should not be the liaison, it should be Chris, and if...
To what?
To the Master Plan Implementation, and, you know, if I could stay on and flip places with her and go on, is that large? I'm willing to do that, or just leave it that one person from the Select Board is sufficient, that we can talk about.
Okay.
I'll stay with you.
Okay. How about you, Chris?
Yeah, well, I feel like, as you said, on CONCOM, there's a lot to learn, and I feel like I've been getting my feet wet in it, literally. So much more to learn, but I'm enjoying being on that committee, and CPC has not taken much time because they're, you know, less frequently, less frequent in terms of their meetings. So I'm pretty open, and Board of Health has been pretty, I'm sort of Board of Health, Board of Assessors has been pretty routine meetings, usually fairly short, so I don't find either assessors or CPC taking up as much of my time, even though they are another committee. I'm kind of good where I am, but I'm willing to, you know, trade off if somebody wants something.
I'm just wondering if you wanted to, I mean, you go to the open space committee meeting anyway, just in the, if you wanted to, since you're doing CONCOM and CPC, if you wanted to just be open space, then I'd take one of the ones that you're doing, if you wanted me to, or one of John's?
Uh huh. Okay, if that makes sense to you. That's what, I've been going kind of as an observer and not a real full member by any means at all, so...
But I didn't know if that would make it, I mean, there's a lot of overlap between Conservation Commission and open space. If you wanted to give up one of the others, like either assessors, or I guess that would be, I know you'll want to stick with Master Plan, but I'm happy to, I'm happy to pick up another one.
So, Reenie, Reenie, let me ask you a question on that. Being the chair, do you want to do less committee works and leave it to the rest of us, so you can concentrate more on what the chair does with the town administrator and everything?
Well, I mean, I appreciate that, but I also want to be fair. You know, I don't want, you know, it just seems that there's certain people have been kind of overloaded with the frequent meetings, and so, I mean, I'm happy to, I'm happy to do whatever. If, I just thought I would mention about open space, and should go there anyway if it would make it easier.
Well, I think it's a great idea, open space. That wasn't what I meant, though, but do you want to take something else on, or do you want one of us to take the other one on, so that you'll have more time? It's up to you.
Well, if you're able to, I'd certainly appreciate that, because I'm pretty maxed at work, and so, I mean, it would be a big help, but I also, I also, if there's a gap, then I'm happy to help fill it.
Which one, Chris, which one were you gonna swap off, or did you want to keep them off?
The two that don't take up as much of my time probably are CPC and assessors, just because the meetings are not usually very lengthy and/or frequent on CPC's side. That's just a once-a-month meeting.
Do you want to give anyone up, or do you want to keep them off? It's up to you. I don't care.
I don't want to be a hog about it. If somebody wants them, I'll give one up. I'm fine with keeping them as well, so whatever feels fair to anybody else is good.
Can I just mention that at this point, since giving, you know, the Master Plan, that leaves me with ZBA that meets very infrequently, and the PBB, which meets twice a month. So I could, I definitely could pick up one.
CPC, maybe?
I'll take CPC.
Okay. Okay, I'll just review then, and if people want to change, assessors, Chris, Board of Health, Reenie, Council on Aging, Reenie, Conservation Commission, Chris, Finance Committee, John. Greenway Negotiating Committee is just intermittent, so I think, hopefully, once we get the funding, we can address that. I know John has done that. Master Plan, Chris, Norris and Hampshire, Matt. Open Space, Chris. Planning Board and Public Safety Committee, John Martin. And, you know, Francine, in the past, you had expressed an interest in also being part of Public Safety Committee. ZBA, Tishman, and then Committee Preservation and PQB, Francine, and Capital Committee, Matt.
Just to add a note to, Chris, you were saying planning meets twice a month. Technically, they're scheduled, but they canceled six times over the last eight months. That's why I say it's only, we're only meeting once a month, but technically, you were right.
How do people feel about this? Is everybody okay with the assignment, then?
Sure, because I believe there are two that are not considered liaison assignments. It's the one that Chris just picked up on grants, and then the other one is the Bylaws Committee, okay?
What was the other one?
Aren't on the charge. Chris has the grants, and I've been doing bylaws, which has been on break, on hiatus throughout the pandemic.
The bylaws, you're both on there by a regular appointment, rather than as a liaison or anything else.
That's what I'm saying. I'm just trying to make people aware of the commitments.
Yep. Okay, that seems like a lot, Chris. I mean, if you wanted to...
If you decide you want to get rid of one, Chris, just let us know, and we'll help out.
Okay, all right. Let's try it for a little bit, and if it starts to get too crazy, especially with, you know, results from Master Plan or anything with the grant stuff, that may take over my life at some point, so if that's true, then I'll let you guys know. How's that?
Okay, if you're sure about that. Okay, I updated this, Ed, and I'm gonna send it to you, okay?
Okay, great.
Okay, so next on the agenda, and Matt had asked that there'd be a couple of items that we cover beforehand. What time is John Workman, Charlie, and Randall coming on board?
Charlie's waiting, and John Workman is waiting now. And going back to the assignments, need a motion and a second and a vote.
Okay.
I move to approve the assignments as the liaison assignments as discussed.
Second.
Okay, Francine, and then Matt, any further comments? All in favor?
Tishman, I.
Paul's eye.
Roland, sorry.
And grade nine. All right, thanks, everyone, and please speak up, I mean, if it gets really busy, especially if the world ever opens up and, you know, meetings are held in person. I mean, that's a lot of meetings. It's certainly accelerated a lot in the last year. Okay, so next, then, we want Charlie to be part of the conversation about Halloween. Matt had asked for that, and also articles. So is everybody okay with us having a quick discussion about the town meeting and articles? Matt wanted to be part of three discussions, and then he will not, he has to leave the meeting. So we can either, Charlie's gonna come on and talk about the Board of Health, so let's just talk about the town meeting. We had talked about the town meeting, but in the 17th, and then, John, you had sent an email talking about the field will be busy on the 17th with soccer?
Yes, I had sent along the email on that, and then it looked like it would be a possibility for the, maybe the 24th, there's a very small window between like 10:30 and 12:30, but we'd still be, shall we say, competing with traffic and parking at the beginning and the end of that. So I was wondering about maybe an alternate site, maybe like, let's just Conan Park, or possibly an alternate date, but as we go into November, it obviously gets cooler.
I'm thinking Conan Park, we could use whatever, occupy whatever space in the pavilion, and then overflow in the area around it.
And we don't...
Electricity, there's a bathroom, parking.
And we don't have any negotiating power with the SYAA or whoever's running the soccer games, sir?
Well, it falls under the Park Commission, so I don't know if they feel that they should, would, or could say you can't have soccer games on that particular day, because the soccer association, you know, pays for the rights to use the field.
Right, and do they usually meet in the morning, though? I'm wondering if we had an afternoon town meeting rather than a morning one, where the weather might be a little warmer, too?
Well, actually, Robert Floyd had talked about that also, but the other complication at this point in time with that for at least the 17th and the 24th is that Lucy Dalton has the, well, she has the early voting for the afternoon on the 17th, believe the morning open, and actually on the 24th, it's booked all day.
Yeah, I forgot about that. Yeah, okay. Robert has his hand up, actually. He's there?
He's, he should be unmuted.
Yeah, I am. Robert Floyd, 1666 College Highway. Thank you, Ed. We had a conversation, and personally, I love sports, I love the kids, but we have business as a town, and we only do this two, three times a year, so I certainly, Plan A would be to approach and ask if we could have the fields for that particular town.
Yeah, so, and I'm sorry to cut you off, but I totally disagree with that. We can find a spot somewhere else in town to do the same exact thing.
Okay, we'll go to Plan B, and my Plan B, as a recommendation, would be Conan Park at the pavilion. We've seen years and years of steady attendance to the summertime free concerts with many times well over 100 people, so that, to me, would work, and I would prefer 1:00 in the afternoon when it's warmer, and I really wouldn't recommend a 9:00 morning with the fog or the dew or whatever occurs in October mornings with the wet grass. And I'm not a fan of everyone bringing their chairs, maybe leave it as a mixed concept, but I think with a 17-plus million-dollar budget, we must be able to pull funds somewhere to do this right, and not to reinvent the wheel. We pulled it off beautifully in August. Well done. We're probably the only town in the Commonwealth to have two outdoor town meetings in almost as many months, and I really wouldn't want us to try to reinvent the wheel. It worked what we did, how we did it. We do have that bathroom, as you mentioned, so we can save funds with the porta potties, but I believe we need a good sound system.
Okay, everybody's clear that we absolutely need to have this town meeting?
Yes, yes.
Okay, all right, so the articles that are currently on there are listed on the agenda, and it's basically the plow and sander for the highway department, library security system, the building department wide format scanner. I do believe that Chief Illingsworth has removed the three TASER units and is trying to fund that through the grant, a grant. Desktop PC replacement and East Hampton Media Peg Access Equipment for Town Hall. Are there any additional articles, or are all those still on the list?
You forgot the pickleball courts, but that's up there.
Pickleball, yeah, that's on the agenda. Yeah, thank you.
It is on the agenda, it's just up one section.
It's higher up there, yeah.
Oh, there it is. Yep, Park Commission, CPC funding for the pickleball. Is there any other articles?
There are two other ones that have come forward. The Conservation Commission has asked to revisit the Wetlands Protection Bylaw, which they originally brought forward at the May 2017 annual town meeting, and then Vicki has said that there's one transfer she'd like to see addressed. Somehow, when the budget numbers were put together, the budget request for the election wages stayed at $1,000 instead of the $5,000, and as you may remember, last year, we had to transfer the election expenses that were paying for the workers into election wages during the year. So we've got another election coming up. There's only, there was only originally $1,000 in there, and she came up with a list of possible areas to transfer it from $2,000 from peg programming, $500 for certification stipends. We haven't used the Select Board minutes line account, at least to this point in time during the year, so, you know, we could transfer some of that money out, maybe $500. Gas and plumbing expenses out of the building department account of $500, and that would basically add up to $3,500 that could be moved into the election registration wages.
And that's the dollar amount that they, is needed for that line item? And that's the dollar amount that is needed for that line item?
We were actually looking to transfer like $4,000 in there, but we couldn't come up with another $500.
Okay.
So we'll be close, but we do have to pay those election workers.
Yep, absolutely. And what is the deadline for us to approve the warrant?
Robert, did you say next Tuesday?
Yeah, next Tuesday.
Okay, so that means tonight unless we have a special meeting.
Unless you have a special meeting, which would be a great option as a backup, take away some of the pressure for tonight, but whatever you want to tonight also.
What do folks want to do?
I think we've got a pretty full agenda tonight. I'd rather think about a special meeting just on the articles and make sure we get them all right.
Okay. And then if you want to, Vicki wants to look into the additional $500 on that. Anybody want to make a comment about the current articles that are on the list?
Yeah, I was just gonna, I was gonna comment on the tasers being removed. That was brilliant.
Okay. Yeah, we talked about on Monday at the meeting of, you know, the COVID emergency group and he has, he's writing a grant, I guess, to try to cover them there. We agreed that it probably wouldn't be a good item for the special town meeting.
Yep.
So.
I just do have a question on the $2,000 from the peg money. I thought we were restricted in how we could use that.
It's a kind of a balance. It looks like the, what we are getting for revenues for peg access for this year, which would be passed on to East Hampton Media, is going to be lower than we actually put in the budget. We put in 70,000. Looks like it'll probably come in maybe a little bit below 68,000. So that's all driven by how many people are actually signed up and utilizing what services. Yep.
Okay. All right, is everybody kind of in agreement to, well, I guess we'd have to do something the next Tuesday, Monday or Tuesday, I would imagine, if people are interested in finalizing the warrant.
Robert has his hand up.
Okay, thank you for letting me know.
Robert Floyd, the Wetlands Protection article is the same that was approved three years ago by Copeland and Page. What about the other bylaws that we've been working on? Any others going to be available for this upcoming special town meeting?
I'll let Ed answer that since.
Yeah.
We know what happens with attorneys.
Yeah, it's basically attorneys have them, but as you, the board knows, we've greatly reduced our legal budget for this year almost by a third. So I don't feel comfortable on my own authorizing any funds to be spent for the bylaw review. If the board does, I am good with that, but right now it's on hold for that authorization.
So a question before the Select Board weigh in. Is there still time if the Select Board decide to okay you to go to Copeland and Page? Is there still time within a week to have some of the bylaws released for consideration for the upcoming meeting?
I would say it would be extremely tight, but I'm not positive of that.
And I think with that, we would have to prioritize those. And the top of the list would be the wetlands. And then we would follow and backfill with others that are completed and have been approved and agreed to by other entities here in town. We have a number that the attorneys have and we're sitting on six or seven that we've completed, but we haven't forwarded any to the Select Board just for the same reason, there's a bottleneck and we're just not going to, you know, continue to, you know, clog things. I mean, that's all I want to say.
I think the Select Board just has to decide how much of the legal fund are we comfortable using for bylaws review. And we could look, it would help me to know how many bylaws are actually sitting at Copeland and Page? How many have been approved by the bylaws committee but not sent to the attorney? And that would be helpful for me to know.
Okay. What I know is they have, I believe they have four that they have not responded to, including the wet.
That's my memory too.
Okay. The wetlands, we did hear back on that they didn't agree with it, but there were no recommendations of the changes so that we could make the change, you know, from their perspective. And then we have probably, and I would say, seven that have been completed by the committee.
Yeah. And just to clarify, Francine, the wetlands is the one that we had originally drafted that Copeland and Page did not think we had done strong enough, I guess I would say. That one is off the table. What is being presented and asked for by Concom now is the one that was drafted back in 2017 that was approved by Copeland and Page and was on the warrant back then and got tabled at some point during the meeting for a reason I'm not sure of.
Okay. So then there's no legal fee associated with that at all?
Well, I don't know if it's got to be sent again, but I know it would have been reviewed at one point, so.
Okay. It would be helpful for me to know what the estimated amount of time it would be if it's even, if we're able to determine that and then we can look at the budget. But are people in agreement that we will include the Wetlands Protection one as recommended from the Concom?
I just got a question after what Chris said. It seems like it was approved by Copeland, tabled, and this new one was put forth. Is that what you were saying, Chris?
Well, the one I had worked on drafting, we had wanted to, we thought the problem was that the length of the one that they had done in 2007, if you'll see it, it's like 13 pages.
Right.
It's, well, whatever, depending on how you format it, yeah, that we did in 2017. But the length of it was very long. So we had tried with Concom's, you know, desire was to say, okay, well, maybe we can chop it down. And that's what we had worked with at the bylaws committee. And that's what KP Law said, no, no, you've chopped it too much. It's not as strong as it should be. So that's what got.
So they preferred the original 2017 version?
Yes.
Correct.
Okay, thanks.
So what is the bylaws committee going to recommend?
The 2017.
2017 version?
Yes.
Okay. All right. So are people okay with having articles proving the warrant for another meeting before next Tuesday?
Yeah. I don't think we have, I don't think we have a choice. And then whatever we approve will contain all the language, the motions and.
Right, so, yeah, we can get the dollar amounts for the transfer, if we can get the copy of the wetlands to review and have the warrant written up and the way it would be presented to the voters, that would be helpful.
Yes, and this version is the posting version, so it won't have the motions or the summaries on it.
Okay. Okay. Are people available for a meeting on the 29th at 6?
I am. Can we put like a stop time in it so that we know that we're working, you know, against the clock here, like an hour or so?
6 to 7?
Yeah.
Is the 29th the right time or 28th? Sorry, I didn't hear.
28th is a Monday. 29th is the Tuesday.
And I think Robert had told us before that the 29th was the drop dead date.
Well, it's not the drop dead date, but for you meeting on a Tuesday night, it would be. You just don't have a couple of days for it to be posted, so it's perfect meeting next Tuesday.
Okay.
And the 6th is too late?
Yes.
Okay. John and Matt, are you able to be part of an hour-long meeting on the 29th?
Sure. Remember reading what we said when we met with the NARA School Committee, it was going to be a 15-minute meeting.
I know. I know. That's why I like Francine's comment about end time.
Sounds good.
How about you, Matt?
Yeah, I can do it to 7 that evening.
Okay.
That's going to be a hard stop for me.
All right. So we're at 6:42 and the other item we were going to try to tackle would be the discussion about Halloween. So we had a conversation about this on Monday during the COVID sort of emergency meeting, which included Chief Workman and Illingsworth, Jerry Swanson, Ed, myself and Charlie. And I had said that it would be great if the police and the Board of Health would make a recommendation to the Select Board. Charlie sent out a document today that gives low, medium and high-risk Halloween activities that was drafted by the CDC. So Charlie, are you unmuted?
It's like he is.
I'm going to have to turn on the video too.
Yeah, and so I just wanted to find out how people want to proceed. I also want to be respectful to Randall and Chief Workman and Charlie because we do have the public information session on the East Street Bridge in about two minutes. So I wanted to, I didn't know whether they were still able to stay on to give a report or if they needed to reschedule. We can, you know, certainly, they're able, they're willing to do that. I wasn't sure if they were clear that they were going to do their report before the information session.
Yeah, I had thought that they would, at least Charlie and John would get their reports in before the information session, but I was wrong on that.
Well, that's because we were kind of jumping around in order to do that, so I apologize for that. But right now, if you wanted to have a conversation, Charlie, are you there?
I am here.
Charlie, thanks for sending out that document from the CDC.
Charlie, got your video?
His video is not working.
Okay, so we might want to just reschedule then because that's one of the criteria that we have in terms of participation. But does the Select Board want, tonight want to make a recommendation in terms of Halloween? I did not hear directly from Chief Illingsworth, from Chief Workman or the Board of Health on this as a directive other than Charlie's document today. So what would you like to do in terms of proceeding? There have been a lot of questions. Jerry Swanson's gotten questions, Lucy Dalton's got questions. So I think the town has to make a determination about what we're recommending.
I mean, I'll launch off here if we're going to have this discussion. I mean, based on the place and time and all of the information that I've reviewed and taken in, including Charlie's most latest item, time and place on where we live, I wouldn't be in support of doing, of touching Halloween for the children, personally. I don't think it poses a risk.
You mean, not making a recommendation at all?
Not canceling it, not doing anything, just letting it play out. That would be, that's my opinion on the matter.
So you're saying run it as you would every other year?
Yep. People can take personal accountability to be safe. At the end of the day, everybody's outside for the most part. If you want to limit it to, you know, packaged goods, that's fine with me, but I think the kids should be out trick-or-treating. It's outside.
But there is exposure to the people that, whose houses the kids are going to.
Yeah, but the natural way that that's handled, if you remember the days, you turn off your light. You don't, you turn off your lights, you don't answer the door. Everybody knows it's Halloween. I mean, every neighborhood has this situation. The kids need this, guys. Like, I mean, we've had 30 cases. I mean, this is outdoors. We're talking packaged candy. To me, this is similar to going to the grocery store. The kids are great at wearing masks now. They're playing sports outside with masks on. Like, let's be reasonable to this population that otherwise doesn't get a voice.
And what about the recommendation that was in Charlie's, the information Charlie sent about, you know, having it out, putting treat bags together and leaving them at your driveway for kids to come by?
But again, that could be how somebody treats and does that holiday based on their comfort level in terms of they want to partake in Halloween, but they don't want to open their door.
Right.
That's fine.
I think there was one of them, and I don't remember, I can't pull it up right now, but there was one that I thought would be one that has been normally done, right? It's the trunk and treat one and that either ended up in a medium or a high category, did it not?
Yeah, and that was talked about on Monday and it was decided that there's just too much converging of people.
Yeah. That's probably not a good idea.
Yeah, so I mean, but that's something I think we ought to say, that, you know, we would agree that that's too high a risk, but.
I would agree with that too.
Yeah. I personally don't support having Halloween. I just, it's not about depriving kids that, you know, this is like their thing. I just don't feel like it's safe. And if, you know, like you don't go to a door in the middle of a pandemic, I just don't feel like it's safe. I think that you can never go wrong when you adopt regulations and guidance from DPH, CDC and other public health, you know, organizations. So I just don't feel like, I would, you know, support low-risk activities as indicated by CDC.
I think you have to take into account the time and place and the location that you live in. Those publications are based on surveying an entire landscape and don't factor in ours. That's my take on it.
I'm just telling you, my opinion is that I would only support low-risk activities. And I would really want to have a guidance from Chief Illingsworth and the Board of Health. And I don't believe we've gotten that yet. So would anybody else? I don't want to hold up the public information session. So is there anybody else that would like to say something relative to that? Do you feel we should take a vote? Do you feel we should wait to hear from, in writing from police and Board of Health? What's your preference?
I agree with, I'd like to hear from Board of Health and the police because I'm kind of split down the middle. All you need is one case that goes spreading around town and it just balloons. Like when the colleges go back, you have one or two kids out of 5,000, all of a sudden you've got 200 students that have it. So I don't know if the risk is worth having it, but I'd like to hear from Board of Health and the police chief.
Okay. So Ed, would you mind double checking? I know Charlie's on the call, but we've sort of had a, from the beginning, we've decided to have consistency around audio and video. So I don't believe that the Board of Health has taken a stance on this, but I did ask on Monday for guidance from police and Board of Health. So if you could check with them and do you want to add it without, do you want to add it to the October 6th? Is this something we should discuss next Tuesday instead or is it the 6th early enough?
I would think the 6th would be early enough.
I think for people and families to plan, the sooner the better.
Okay, let's put on the agenda for the 6th then. And if you can make sure that we get some guidance from the, from the police and the Board of Health and our health director, that'd be great. So at this point then, I'm going to open up the public information session on the East Street Bridge and welcome John Furman from VHB to kind of give us the, there's a number of people on the call that I know are interested in hearing where we're at with that. So without further delay, why don't we, are you unmuted, John?
He is.
He is? Okay.
John, Workman or Furman?
Furman.
But before we do that, John and Randall, if you're able to stay, we could go right to your present, you know, like updates afterwards. If I understand, if you had expected to go beforehand and you can't stay, then just let us know and we'll reschedule.
Yeah, do you estimate the time?
Pardon?
Estimated time, how long do you expect that would be?
Is there a timeframe for the information session?
I think we'll probably get through what I have in 15 minutes.
Okay, all right. So maybe 15, 20 minutes, John?
Don't forget your questions.
I think you need to allow for questions, guys. We've got a lot of people.
All right, so let's plan a half an hour then and let's go ahead and have you start then, John, okay?
Okay, very good.
So welcome and thanks for coming.
All right. Good evening, everybody. Just for those that don't know me, I'm John Furman. I'm the Director of Land Development for VHB Springfield Office. And we are your consultant for the design of the East Street Bridge replacement. I was in front of you with the Director of our Transportation Services, I think, probably eight or nine months ago, before we had really started working on the design. And Ed asked me to come in and just give you an update on where we are. So I'd like to do is maybe just walk through the plans a little bit, then end up with kind of a summary of where we are as far as permitting and then open up to any questions that you might have. So, Ed, can I share my screen?
Should be able to.
All right. Okay, I'm going to start with this one here. This is our highway plan. And so what we have ended up doing is as part of the permitting process, you know, we received comments from the Natural Heritage and from the DEP. we received comments from the Natural Heritage and from the DEP with respect to stormwater and how we, excuse me, my dog is. So I apologize for that. And so we ended up doing a number of things that just aren't included out there right now. So just to kind of orient everybody, this dark line here, and this dark line here, which I'm tracing now, is the actual width of the bridge. And it's much wider than what is out there already, and what this does is it includes a lane in each direction, in addition to a shoulder on the outside of that lane, which I believe is two feet. The lanes are 12 feet. And then it has a multipath constructed across it right now. And we coordinated this with the current Mass DOT plans for roadway projects. Currently, when we do a, a project, they, they look to all infrastructure being constructed to have some sort of combinations for bikes and pedestrians. Excuse me. In this case, by using the multipath, it's a combination of both bikes and pedestrians, and it's, I believe it's 11 feet wide. So it's, it's wider here. It'll basically end here and here, so it'll be a fairly wide sidewalk. When the Glendale Road project, I mean, not Glendale, excuse me, when the East Street project there gets under, under design, the intent is, is that the multi-lane path would extend from this point to the center of town. And we're not really sure where it would go from here, whether it would just stop here and then you'd have a share the road type of design, or whether the path would continue for the rest of East Street. I haven't thought out yet. The, one, a couple of the features I want to point out, on the current design, water basically flows along this, it flows in this direction. It comes along this curb, and then it basically, there's a, there's a pipe in the ground, and it rolls down the embankment and goes into the river. It's untreated. And the DEP wanted to have some improvement, this is, with it being a cold water fishery, we need to get rid of the sediments. So we closed that, we added a catch basin here, which is called the Storm Scepter, and that allows us to remove more sediment than a standard catch basin. And then there's an existing catch basin here, which takes a good chunk of water. We replaced that with a Storm Scepter as well. Some brand-new pipe coming over to here, it joins with the outlet from this catch basin. And then we have a series of step-down trenches. The purpose of these is a water quality swell. So any sediment that gets out of the Storm Scepter, there's always gonna be some left, gets trapped in the blade, the grass blades, and it basically sticks there. It's a approved feature for cold water fishery, and then rolls over the riprap and goes into the river. So this has all been reviewed and approved by the Conservation Commission, Natural Heritage input into the design, so that we change the riprap design under the bridge to accommodate them and allow for wildlife passage from one side to the other. The water main is gonna be disconnected, and it will basically be dead-ended here. And in town, we have the ability to backfeed, so anyone on this side will get water still the way that they are. The gas is a different issue, the gas, this is actually a dead end. So if we were to cut it and break it here, it's hung on the bridge right now, people over in this end would not have any gas. So we worked with the gas company, and what they're going to do is bore and jack a, and do directional drilling, a new gas line under the river. So they're gonna have a pit here, a pit here, and then they'll push this main all the way through. Then they'll connect it to the existing main over here, and then here, we can cut the old main off, and then the gas will forever be off the bridge. We won't have to deal with it. So that's generally an overview of, you know, where we are. These dark lines here, the DEP and the Conservation Commission wanted to have no riprap in what's called the bank or the land underwater. So these are core logs, they're basically a sack, long tube sack that's filled with erosion control material, and they're anchored in, to the bank with wood stakes, and there's a number of rows there. So as the water, you know, flows over them, they have a redundancy on that. I'm gonna flip to a different picture now. This is just kind of an overview, a little bit smaller scale, kind of showing the limit of the project. It basically starts a little bit before the bridge by a driveway to this house here, and then ends basically halfway through this adjacent lot before this driveway. Contractors, we're gonna intend for them to stage, the bridge will be closed, they can do their staging on the roadway, basically between the driveway and the bridge, anticipating there's any additional area needed for, for staging. I'm gonna flip through a couple plans here to get to another one. Again, this is a, an enlarged view of the bridge, there's a water quality swell. Things that we're adding that aren't existing on the current bridge is that we have approach slabs that are buried under the, under the pavement. So what that does, it key, is the load transfers from the paving to a hard fixed surface like the bridge tend to get that bouncing in the pavement to settle. What this approach slab does is it basically provides additional support, so we don't have that, so it'll be a smooth transition all the way through. This is a better look at the width of the multi-use path and the roadways that through here. You can see that'll be the curb line, and the multi-use path is right here. And there's one other detail right here, which is the, if I can get a bit of that. So this is a section, the longitudinal section through the bridge, it basically shows what we're going to be doing. Here's the actual bridge structure with a new bridge rail. This is the approach slab here, the abutment is here, I'm sorry, abutment's here and here. This is piles that we're driving down a bedrock, so we don't get any settlement. This is the existing riverbed, those are those erosion control features we talked about on either side. This is the riprap going up the embankment, and then this shaded line here is what Natural Heritage required to allow for the wildlife passage. Basically, the riprap will be installed, and then this material will be fluffed into it to create a passage that the animals will actually walk on. And there's really nothing more, there, well, actually, there is one more, excuse me, there is a section, right here. So this is a section through the, let me zoom up on it, through the, the bridge. You can see the water line basically hanging on the two girders through here, so it will no longer be hanging off the side like it is right now. It'll be basically through there, but the bridge will be unencumbered with any other utilities. The gas is being taken off, so it's really just the bridge structure. So let me just flip back to Plan View, zoom up on that, and then, so as far as permitting goes, we have submitted our first round of comments to DEP at the first of the year, I believe it was. And it took them three to four months to actually get through to review it. And I believe what has happened is that we submitted them, it was supposed to be a 30-day review, but COVID hit, and then when everything went dark as far as state offices and stuff like that, there was a delay in getting comments back from them. So we finally have those back. Coincident with that is that we filed for the, with the notice of intent with the Conservation Commission. So then the, the process, kind of, they, they both kind of ran together at the same time. We see the comments back from Mass DOT, they were minor, they were looking for clarifications on a number of items, changing names and some nomenclature to coincide with the current Mass DOT requirements. We did not, we held off on resubmitting them because we wanted to get through the Conservation Commission meeting before we submitted to Mass DOT to make sure that there weren't any changes that we had to incorporate again. Once we got through the, the conservation process, we did have to make some modifications which basically related to these, the erosion control logs that are along the embankment, the treatment of the riprap, and then some clearing, I hope. So once we got those up to date and we closed the Conservation Commission meeting, we updated the plans and then resubmitted them to Mass DOT. They acknowledged, then had a few initial comments which we addressed quickly. So as of last Friday, I believe the, the Mass DOT has this current supplemental, the, since it's a re-review of the initial design, we're not anticipating that it's gonna take as long as the first one did, so we're, we're hopeful that we'll get through that process within 30 days. So the Conservation Commission meeting is closed, the order has been recorded, and it has a copy of the recording data, so that process is closed. We still have a rare species survey to do, but it was suggested that we hold off on that until, by Natural Heritage, until we get closer to a big date, make sure that the surveys only have a shelf life of about three, four months, so we didn't want to do it and then have to do it again. There are a number of requirements that the contractor is going to have to do, which are included in the Order of Conditions, and that'll just be part of the, the monitoring process that goes on from, from there. And really, the last permit we have is the Chapter 91 Waterways License, which allows for the bridge. We had intended to update the Chapter 91 license that was there for the initial bridge, and in, on our coordination with the agency, we found out that the original bridge didn't have one, so we had to redo it and basically file for a new water license. So the update would have been a, most likely, a 30-day to a 60-day review process. Now, we're probably looking anywhere from three to six months to get through that process, because even though the bridge was there, it wasn't there in their records, so they have to review everything. So once we get through that process, we will really officially be done. We can put it out to bid, and the bid process, we usually, standard is six weeks, and then we'll have a definite construction date for that. Once we get a start date, we can finalize the rare species survey, that can be done very quickly, and then we're off and running. And then the, the detour plan, the contractor submits a detour plan, the bridge will be closed, it'll be demolished as part of the first piece. Prior to demolition, the gas line will be relocated and the water main cut, so that we can demolish the bridge, and then it's just a matter of cleaning the area and installing the new infrastructure. So I don't know how close I came to 15 minutes, but I'm probably pretty close to that. Happy to answer any questions that I can on this.
Okay, thank you very much. Does anybody have any questions for John?
I've got one, just on the railings, John. What's the material these railings are gonna be made of? Is it wood, concrete, steel?
I believe the current standard is steel. It's, it's either a weathered steel that rusts naturally, and the rust, it does a protective coating on it, or it is a low-rated steel that is, that is painted with an epoxy. It's one of those two. I'm not really sure which one we selected, but it's, it's definitely not wood.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah.
John, I've got a quick question. Once the bidding goes out and we've got a contractor identified, and all things are ready to go, what's sort of the outside timeframe for actually completing the construction?
This is a fairly small project as bridges, bridges go, you know, so we're anticipating that this can be done in a construction season. So if we get through the Chapter 91 licenses, and then through the winter, the colder months, we, there's no reason why we, we don't, we can't put it out to bid and get those documents ready. We would like to have the 91 license in hand before we do that. Once we do, we send it out to bid, and the bid documents will basically say that, you know, the contractor is not expected to start construction until a certain date when snow and frost is gone, and then we give an end date. And we, this is a one-season project, this is not a multiple-season project. So drop dead date as far as an end would go, we would expect that to be sometime first to middle of November, because that's when paving plants close. So we wouldn't want to go any later than that, otherwise we would have open road right here. So we back in from there, construction starts, you know, they can start in February, March, there, there's no reason why not to do demolition during the winter months, it's, it's really not gonna impact it, you just gotta follow all this erosion control and get all this pre-construction meeting requirements out of the way, and then you can keep it running.
So it sounds like the road's gonna be out of commission for the better part of a year, then?
Yes, yes, that's definitely. We had, we had looked at doing a phased construction, basically keep one half open, and even under that scenario, traffic was not going to be allowed on the bridge. Even, we were keeping half open so that we could construct one half, move the utilities onto the other side, and then do the other half. But it was, there's never, was never a scenario with this bridge that it would be open. Structure is just weak, and if you start pulling away half of it, there was just no guarantee that it was gonna be able to hold itself up.
Charlie! Thank you for coming.
Okay.
He doesn't like the beat.
So that, John?
What are sandshoes?
There's somebody talking in the background. John, can you hear me? It's more ringing.
I can hear you, Murray.
Yeah, so in terms of the process for the emergency personnel in town to come up with alternative routes to have a well-coordinated plan, especially for the people that live on the, you know, the east side of East Street, when does that happen?
The, the contractor will be responsible for establishing a detour plan, and in this case, it's actually, you know, fairly simple, because there really is only a couple ways of going depending on for you. So, I mean, with the bridge being completely closed, there'll be Jersey barriers in front of the east side to prevent traffic coming in, you know, and they'll be right along the access limit of work here, and there'll be breaks in to allow for construction in and out, but, but the actual burial will be back by the driveway and over here at the end. You know, it'll be adequately posted, and, and the emergency personnel in town will know that that bridge is closed, that they need to open it up.
Okay. Can I just, for that background noise? Ed, I'm wondering if you could mute, anybody except someone who's speaking?
Yeah, there's somebody named Dave who must have his microphone active.
Yeah, if you could unmute, or mute. Yeah, there we go.
There we go.
What other questions do people have? And at this point, if there's no other questions by the select board, I'd like to open it up to anybody in the public that has audio and video that would like to ask a question for John. Any questions from anyone?
Yes, I had a question, just what that means for East Street paving in general? Would the paving of the entire road happen all at the same time?
No. You want the person to identify themselves? I have no idea.
Would you mind just identifying your name and also your address, please?
Sure, my name is, yep, Tricia Rogers, Seven Old Harvest.
Yeah, so this, I'm going back to this overall plan that we started with. So the limit of work is basically just on either side of, of the bridge, so, excuse me a minute. John wants to go outside again. So this is that driveway that's to this property here, so we're basically just on the side of the driveway. The paving will actually go from the end of the abutment to here, and then from this abutment through Strong Street. You can see we're, we're picking up the intersection, coming around, and then basically ending it back over here. So, so the paving is just this immediate area here. The rest of the roadway, it'll blend into what's already there, so the roadway cross-section at the bridge is much wider than the existing paving, so we'll do a long taper, basically get it back down.
Thank you.
Yeah, and just like.
Select Board, what, what is the plan for repairing the rest of the road?
Yeah, so the bridge is Phase 1, it wasn't originally, but then when the funding became available, the original funding, the bridge was sort of put on the Phase 1. 2025 Southampton is in line for rehabilitation of East Street from College Highway to County Road, 2.6 miles, and that's $4,956,200. And so that's, was still in line for state and federal funding. So that is the hope, that that will, that will be the timetable. It's a ways off, but that is the, the plan is to work on from the bridge to College Highway, and then from the bridge to County Road. So additional questions from anybody? No? Anybody in the select board have anything else they'd like to ask?
I have one question.
Can you hear me?
Yep, is that John?
No, this is Mike Rosenberg, 144 East Street.
Oh, hi, Mike, how you doing?
Good, is my video on?
Yep.
All right, I'm on my phone. Oh, there we are. I just had a question, right? So 2025 is four years away. The road has been patched in, you know, cold patched here and fixed here. And it's always been sort of put off doing any main repairs because of future funding. Four more years is not going to do the road any good. So in the interim, is there going to be any money invested in it? Because I'll be honest with you, I leave my house, and I'll drive down Pleasant Street instead of driving all the way to five and to College Highway, because, you know, that section is pretty bad. So, I mean, is there a plan to dedicate some funds in the next few years to some of the other areas?
Well, you know, the difficulty with that, Mike, is that, you know, we have a lot of big items, you know, from Public Safety Complex to senior center and a lot of other things on the list of wishes. But clearly, the worst road in town is East Street. And certainly, if, you know, we're going to be reaching out to John Viallis and Lenny Sabadosa and see if additional funds are available. But right now, there hasn't been a lot of money. We have a huge reduction in state aid as it is. But certainly, if opportunities become available, that we'll go after them.
Yeah, and I bring it up just from, you know, some of my time on the Master Plan Committee. East Street is number two or number three in the most traveled roads in town. And I've lived here six years, and I haven't seen any major repair. You know, the highway department's been awesome, I think, for fixing the potholes, for addressing the things they could. You know, I had a runoff issue in my yard. Randall did a great job, you know, adjusting what he could. But, you know, in general, four years is not going to do the road any favors. And if it is as heavily traveled as it is, it's going to just get worse, right? So just wanted to bring it up.
Yeah, and keep in mind, Mike, that this is all going to have to be designed and then redone, including sidewalks. So there may be some major changes out there. So whether the road gets widened on one side or what have you, all plays into that. Because it's going to have to meet all the new design specifications.
Understood, thank you.
Who else would like to speak to the East Street or East Street Bridge?
Can I just ask a question? Eli Stark, 52 East Street. I was wondering if when direct neighbors, like just clarifying that direct neighbors will be told, like, when our gas is going to be shut off and, you know, just different things like that, just so we're prepared.
So if things go well, you should see no interruption of service, because the intent is not to have any downtime. The utility companies are responsible for notifying any outages. It really wouldn't be part of this project or for the contract to go door-to-door and say that your gas company is off. But the thought is, all this work here would be done. And then we're, at this point, we're just talking about one connection here, and one connection here. And the technology that they have, they'll either do it at night or they'll do it where you will have the least impact. I'm sure there's going to be some notifications. In case there are some outages, but we're not expecting anything major. And particularly for water, we're expecting none, because the water main can be isolated, shut down. We could do that today, and you'd never know the difference. Your water, instead of creating this loop, would just end up stopping here, stopping here, and you'd never know. So expect no difference in water.
Thank you.
Okay, any other comments or questions for John? Or any of us? Okay, it'll be great to have this, all the licenses and approvals. And it sounds like it'll be possibly as early as February, March, with a end date of November. Are there any pictures, John? I mean, the engineering drawings are great, but is there any sort of a computer-generated, you know, picture of what the bridge will look like ultimately, or no?
We typically don't do that, because most of Mass DOT does not require it. But I could see if the guys have put anything together. And if they have, I'll send it over to Ed.
Okay.
I don't have anything available.
Okay. Any other questions, then? Okay, well, thank you very much, John, for coming in and giving us that update and looking forward to having this move along.
You're welcome. It's always a pleasure to be in front of you guys. And have a good meeting. Thank you.
Thanks, John.
Yeah, take care.
Okay. So let's move along. And let me just check in with the folks that were going, the department heads, in terms of how you like to proceed. Is Charlie still on the call, or no? Randall's there, and I see John. Would either of you like to give your update?
Sure.
That'd be great, thanks a lot, chief.
Yeah, no problem at all. So, boy, you guys have lots of long meetings. I feel bad for you. Generally, Fire Department is running very well. Our call volume, which was initially down with some of the COVID, has increased, and we are actually at exact numbers as we were in previous years. We average about 57, just over 57 calls a month. To date, we've had about 350 requests for medical and about 149 for fire-related emergencies. Staffing, we've had a little bit of trouble with staffing, just in that we have about 11 members that are inactive due to some changes in life or just concerns with some of the COVID and other family members. And so we've started to build back, just with some paramedics and probably at least another EMT. It won't change the budget. It's all per diem for available shift, so it won't add to budget at all. But we're starting to get some more members on. We have a total on roster currently of about 48, with about 37 active. Yeah, yeah, we got a good crew, we really do. And it's an experienced crew, and they're doing well. So with the 11 that were out and vacations during summer, we were up for some intercepts and some calls that we had to deflect to East Hampton. I don't like to do that, because that's a loss of revenue. And I want to be able to provide immediate service from our ambulance service right here in town. And so my concentration is to really get paramedics in to fill out shifts. So we're there. Our next month is looking tremendous. The guys are really picking up. Men and women are doing great, so that's a good thing. Like I said, call volume is right back up again. Equipment, we've had a couple of setbacks. Well, our major setback was probably our frontline engine, Engine 3, which had a transmission problem. The PTO-driven pump had an internal failure. It cost, it's about $4,432 that we had to spend unexpectedly. I'm not sure how to shake out the budget later. Actually used a mechanic that had worked for North Hampton, rather than a factor, there's a, one of the sales, that sells equipment, which sent it there before. And we saved almost $3,000 by using this North Hampton mechanic, who is now freelance on his own. So that's a good thing that we now have available. Saved us some money, but it still cost us some money. Our Engine 1, which is our oldest engine, I couldn't get it to pass pump test. We don't need three engines. It's not worth putting money into. I'm looking to decommission that engine. And, Ed, I'm not sure what you need, but it'd probably be good, especially in these financially strapped times, that we put that out and let the town sell that and add to general fund. So whatever we need to move forward with that, it'd be good to do. For equipment, we got some new gas meters that went into. We purchased some carbon dioxide multi-gas, flammable gas meters. The old ones, the sensors go bad and the technology changes. And so we had updated two of the meters that we had. We still have one that the sensors are good. And we've got that on one of the ambulances. Otherwise, we run those on each of the engines. So we updated those. Through the recent capital money, we purchased thermal imagers, the previous thermal imagers, the batteries were old and no longer serviceable. The concern is it's a light safety question. You send a cool interior for the thermal imager, it's the only way that they can see in the dark. And to have equipment that could die halfway through going in on an entry was not good. So appreciate that the town stepped forward with the capital money. Those thermal imagers, we received them, put those into service. We've updated some programming in some of our radios. Just, pretty much just added a feature, so that if there's a, if someone on the department is just interested in responding to fires, and they're not an EMT, they can set it to a channel that will just open when a fire call goes out, which is advantageous in that they'll keep their pagers on and will get a better response due to that. COVID-19 personal protective equipment, we're actually doing pretty well with that. We spent a lot of time in the beginning of all of this, just really worked to get some stockpiles, some sustainable stockpiles. We've gotten some half masks to really provide a longer life. And we can just replace the filters rather than the N95s, although we do have N95s, just because in some situations, they're convenient. And it's good to have the redundancy, only because it had been such problems, to really keep the folks updated with adequate breathing equipment to keep them safe from the COVID, as they dealt with folks that had it, and we transported it. That's the same for like goggles, gowns, and gloves. All the levels in that regard are actually, are good and doing pretty well. Our members, I mean, we have had some members. I mean, our medics and EMTs are off, you know, everybody, except for myself, it's a second job, so they all work in other departments as well. And so it's hard to tell when someone has an exposure or tests positive for COVID. We have, through the summer, through the spring, we have had some folks who go off-roster and back on with negative tests, some exposures that have just spent their time in quarantine. But currently, everybody's doing well and, you know, service is 100%. Probably anything outside of that would really be. We still have ongoing OSHA concerns with station upgrades. It's something that, you know, we haven't really talked about. It's an ongoing cost. I don't really know how to tackle it, because of course, there's no money for anything. But the challenge is, if OSHA really comes in, there's a lot of things that are non-compliant with OSHA. There's no exhaust extraction, the gear. You know, even a lot of these folks have their masks in the same area where the trucks run. And the exhaust gas from the trucks does not leave the building, except for through the garage door. It's not ideal. I'm not telling you anything new, that the station is old and really needs updating and/or a new station. You know, it's on radar. It's hard to think about when that will be forthcoming. We may have to look at some of the OSHA things a little bit more closely to see which ones are more have-to. But that's a discussion that we can follow in the event of a town. The CARES funding, I know you formulated some folks. I know that Chris had gone to, had attended one of the meetings. I was on vacation at that time, they had an online seminar. You know, I know that, you know, the town had gotten the, you know, approximate $540,000. I know that we'd use some early on, just for some of the personal protective equipment that we brought in, some UV lights and some things of that nature. I certainly would, you know, we need to look out for schools. I'm not sure what schools need. I'm not sure how that money is earmarked. The last thing I'd want to do is to have that money go back to the federal government without Southampton utilizing it to as much as we possibly could. I think it would be prudent if we really are looking at some of that CARES money and utilizing it. I know that, like, East Hampton just bought $100,000 plus worth of equipment. And a lot of the equipment that he got would, is easily defendable within the confines of the CARES funding. And it would be prudent for us to look at replacement of, probably some radios, SBO2 CO cables for some of our monitors, just because, you know, each cable that tells your oxygen levels is, they're about $900 each. The Tough Books that we have, which is the computer that they use in the back of the ambulance for patient information. In order to save costs, in past years, I'd gotten used ones. They're okay, but if, certainly, we need to keep good, reliable documentation that the COVID money can pay for. You know, I mean, Tough Books are probably about $3,000 each. You know, I'd be interested in a couple of those if there's money available. There's, the other thing with COVID is, if somebody, one of the signs symptoms is, you know, respiratory distress, cardiac failure. We do have one automated CPR machine, a Lucas device. It's in our frontline piece. It would be an excellent opportunity now to put one into the backup piece. And it would give us good equipment that we would have moving forward. And if it's paid for through a grant, would be ideal. They're about $16,000 each. DEFIBs, we could look at defibrillators. I know the one at Town Hall, the schools have some, although we don't maintain the school ones. We did help them get the ones that they have. I want to say they have two. And there's some that we're operating on our rigs that we would be worth looking at and possibly updating, some defibrillators. You know, past that is probably, probably the only other really big item would be like an autoloader. If we purchased an autoloader for our backup ambulance, it would be a cost savings when we look to get a new ambulance, which is still some years in the future. But an autoloader is probably about $26,000. If we're looking, you know, where we can spend money from CARES, it would be something that we could invest in now for our future. And if it's covered by federal money, it just seems like a good way to go. The only other thing that really jumps out would probably be like a CPAP machine, the continuous positive airway pressure machine that is a symptom matter problem specifically for COVID. So all these things can be directly related to COVID response and could fit within grant parameters. I'm not sure if you formulated a committee to talk about some of this stuff. I don't know if the money's already spent. I don't really know. I haven't been approached with any conversations, so I'm not sure if you're going to be starting those, if that's something that we could pursue, that I would recommend that we sit down with whatever group is looking at how to spend that money that we've been allocated.
That has been put together, John, just so you know. There is a committee that is looking at second round CARES Act funding. And so it's, you know, perfect timing.
Okay.
Charlie, Charlie, I think there was a, I'll let Chris or Matt Rowland speak to that when you're done, John. But there is definitely a committee together.
Great.
Can I just raise something?
Sure.
Yeah. In the first round of funding that we have under the CARES Act, if we can move any of that money around, some of that may satisfy some of your needs.
Yeah, I know that we've already spent some of the money that's in there. I want to say only about $20,000 on equipment. Like I say, just what I rattled off on a relatively quick estimation is almost $57,000 worth of equipment. There was, I mean, there was money put in for a secretary, because I'm the only full-time person there. There's a lot of paperwork. I mean, I personally bought filing cabinets, because there were years of boxes there. It would be a wonderful thing if, you know, if a It would be a wonderful thing if, you know, if a secretary was something that could come out of the CARES Act. That would be ideal. I know that was on there. I believe it got funded, but I don't know whether to just proceed on that, whether we want to talk about it. I'm certainly up for discussion. I think it's, would be ideal to put the money in the most prudent place and let it be on board with everybody in regards to what that looks like for, for us. So I'm, I'm fine with reallocating if reallocating as long as it fits grant parameters. I'm good with any of that discussion and would welcome it.
Okay. Anything else, John, before I ask for any questions?
No, I think I've covered a fair amount, certainly happy to answer.
Well, I just want to say thank you for everything. I know that a letter came in, we were CC'd on it, but it came in from a resident just thanking you and your department for very professional, very kind service. So I just want to say thank you, but we all got a copy of that letter. And so just wanted to say thank you. So what questions are there for John? Any other questions for John? Chief Workman?
Yep. And if you think of them later, you're always welcome to contact me.
We know where to find you.
Yeah.
Does Matt or Chris Falls want to say a word or two about the committee and process and so far?
Sure, I'll, I'll jump in. I'm not sure Matt's back yet. Yeah, we've, we've got a committee pulled together. Matt's been on it along with myself, Ed and Charlie. And we've got a couple of other new people that have just volunteered to help us out. Kate Swistak is one and Sharon Powell. So they have both got experience with grant, either grant management, grant writing, et cetera. And so are, we don't have a date yet for the second phase, if you will, of the remainder of the CARES Act funding, when the application is due. But we're assuming it's going to be in the early part of October. And so we've kind of divided up duties a little bit at our last meeting. And Ed is going to sort of take on the, the first round of everything that was asked for and be sure that everybody knows exactly what got approved. And then reach out to you guys that were on that first grounding list to see what your thoughts are for the second round, some of which you've enumerated here. And then we noticed that there were a couple of departments in particular that had not seemingly gotten very much voiced in terms of their needs, shall I say. So Matt was going to tackle Norris a little bit and see if he could get more of a one-on-one meeting with them and see if they had some real specific needs that maybe they had overlooked. I know they did get some money through a different pot of money tied to COVID. They got $30,000, but I'm not sure if it covered laptops or what it might have covered. So we need to understand that.
Yep. And so they should have a lot of it because that would be good to.
Right, there should be some things that they could, they could, you know, be covered there. And then both Kate and I are going to meet with COA and Library to sort of double check with them and see what other things they might need that they were, you know, sort of lacking the first time around and see if we can also get them, you know, in, into the second phase of money that's available. And then we talked about a few others that maybe we kind of overlooked, like I know Water Commission might have some needs. Highway, sorry, Parks, I think had some requests in the first time. But we also thought about maybe the Ag Commission with the market gardens and things going on right now. And they follow sales at the farm, farm markets, et cetera, if they might need PPE or any of that kind of stuff. So we're trying to reach out over these next couple of weeks. And we'll be meeting again on October 1st. And I'll, I'll let you know if you wanted to stop by the meeting, but we were meeting just right outside the COA on the, on the picnic tables at 3 o'clock on October 1st right now.
Okay, is that something that I'm invited to or?
You're more than welcome to stop by. We, Chief Filling's were stopped by the other day and told us about a problem he was having and trying to figure out how he could get some grant money. So sure, I mean, we're more than welcome at it. But I think before that Ed's gonna, you can say what you're gonna do, but Ed's gonna reach out to everybody and get a, get a list of, a wish list from you all, I think a need list.
Yeah, I think, I think we all, we all need to have equal voice in that. I think that's, you know, it's money that is available to the town. Certainly I'm not looking to usurp, but I think that's, that's a good idea. And honestly, I'm not sure who would answer the question in regards to some of the money that was initially allocated. Honestly, when that first had been put forth, I was so wrapped up in just providing, getting gear, PPE. I didn't really have the time to put the proper assessment into that. And I know that the parameters have been changed where they reimburse different amounts. So if somebody had some answers to some of the questions of how some of that first monies might work.
I've got all that and I'll be sending it along to you, John.
Okay. Sounds good.
Yeah, and maybe just one other thought, just because you brought up the idea of the, in the first round, there was a mention of possibly an assistant to, to help out. Our understanding right now, and it may change in terms of their regulations, but basically the, the funding needs to be, the benefit of the funding needs to be received by December 30th. So it'd be a short-term help at the moment, I guess I would say. It could be a temporary person or something for a short term apparently. But December 30th seems to be the end date right now for this, this round of funding.
Yeah, and that's fine. I, I mean, I haven't moved on it only because there hasn't been any discussion to it. And I don't want to overstep my bounds within it, but I also hate to see money get lost if we're not taking action.
Sure, yeah. And I guess, guys, I don't know, it would, it would come through PQB, would it, Rini, I'm sure.
Yeah, absolutely. And it's been funded, John. So I mean, if there's a, is a backlog of things and if we do find out that the services have to be, the benefit of them have to be realized by the 30th of December or whatever. I mean, you can, seems to me you can move forward. I mean, that might not have improved. And but you, you know, it might be not a permanent position, but I mean, if you have a backlog of things because of all of the
Absolutely, yeah.
work we've done. I mean, you've done a tremendous amount in securing PPE and doing a lot of things because of COVID. It seems to me that that would be perfectly okay to move forward on.
Okay, okay, yeah, I hadn't heard that previous to now, so that's great to know. And I will, I'll talk to Ed further along.
Yeah.
Great.
And that's why I suggested that we get a sense of where it is that we are right now.
Yeah.
It's impossible for us to move around so that we don't return anything from Phase 1. Absolutely. And we're entitled to everything in Phase 2.
I like the sound of that. That makes a lot of sense.
Are there any other questions for Chief Workman?
No, don't think so.
Okay, well, thanks so much for joining us and thanks for waiting it out.
Okay, yeah, no problem. Good to get it over if we can, right?
Okay, great. Okay, so I understand that Charlie does not have video and was wondering if he still gets a report. I don't see him on the call right now, but I do see Randall, so.
Charlie's on.
What's that?
Charlie just got back on.
Okay, so we had, you know, had some problems with inconsistencies in terms of some people were not able to speak that had, didn't have video, other people did. So I just need to have a vote by the select board if you're, if, is this going to be, are you okay with, Charlie does not have video, are you okay with getting a report from him by audio? Or are you interested in keeping what we had previously agreed to in terms of video? I'm totally open to what the select board wants to do.
I think we recognize his voice, so since we asked him for a report, I'm okay with it.
Okay.
I'd rather have Randall go first. I think he's been waiting patiently.
Okay, all right, so Charlie, if you don't mind, if everybody else is okay with it, Charlie, if you don't mind, just hang in there a bit. Then we'll have a report from our Highway Superintendent Randall.
Sure.
Hi, Randall. Thanks, Charlie.
Randall's on mute.
Yeah, Ed, can you unmute Randall?
Yes, I can.
Oh, I think, I think I've got it. Can you hear me now?
Yeah, I can hear you, yeah, thank you.
Yeah. All right, good evening. I hope that you and your families are all doing well. I guess my last update to you guys was mid-December of 2019. Since then, the Highway Department has continued to be productive and provide most of our essential services to Southampton despite the pandemic and limited staff. In addition to ongoing open positions, we have had two employees out due to injuries who have returned. But a third and a fourth out for an estimated eight and 10 to 12 weeks respectively. Chapter 90 funds were used to pave Pomeroy Meadow and Valley Roads. State-funded Glendale Road reconstruction has been completed. The final walkthrough with mass DOT occurred on May 20th. And the walkthrough to close out the Order of Conditions with the Southampton Conservation Commission occurred on August 7th. We have repainted traffic markings on various roads and replaced missing signs throughout town. Crack sealing on Middle Road began this Monday and should wrap up on Friday. We are working on grading gravel roads before winter. Moose Brook Road has been completed and Fomer Road is underway. We would have done some more today, but we, staff had to go out and attend to a water break for the Water Department. Work we have left that'll either occur this fall or in the spring of 2021. A 20% rubberized chip seal of Cook and Pequot Roads. Paved level overlay of County Road North, Hillside Meadow Drive and a degraded section of Gilbert. Do you guys want to, a rundown of the Chapter 90 information? I know sometimes.
Run down the chapter what, Randall?
Chapter 90. Money, so.
Yeah.
We got our apportionment for the year on July 9th. It was $314,000. $314,265. Our expenses since January have been $310,418.82. And our encumbered projects total $678,741.29. We have available currently $343,000 and change. Kind of holding back to see what bids on East Street Bridge come in at. We don't want any funding gaps with that. So that's where Chapter 90 is. We had about a week of cleaning up down trees after Tropical Storm Isaius and several of the trees down in the middle of the night throughout, throughout the summer with the thunderstorms. As you know, COVID shut down many businesses and caused delays to many supply chains. In my last update, September 16th, I spoke to MHQ. And the body on the truck we ordered should be at MHQ September 18th, which was last Friday, I think. Our vendor from MHQ states that we will have the new truck by the end of October. So that's good news.
Just to clarify, Randall, which truck is this, the one from last fall?
Yes, we, we still need to go to town meeting for the, the newest one.
The newest one, right, yeah.
Right, but I'd like to thank you and, and the voters of Southampton for the support. We need to keep on track and get the second truck approved as well if we want to keep on track with our vehicle replacement program. It's important to be able to get out there and clear the roads and not have mechanical breakdowns. Our stormwater compliance tasks are on target. Street sweeping was completed by early summer. Catch basin cleaning is underway and ongoing. Our MS4 annual report is due September 28th. Currently in draft form and under review. Ed was instrumental in getting Southampton a $10,900 grant for municipal code review to ensure compliance with our MS4. Ed, myself and Representative Cindy Palmer for Planning Board and Art Lawrence from Conservation Commission worked with PV, PC to draft stormwater bylaw, a stormwater bylaw over a half dozen meetings from January to July. I'd like to thank them all for their hard work put into the project. The proposed bylaw moves several existing regulations out of our zoning regulations and into a standalone bylaw to allow for more smooth future adjustments due to regular regulatory changes that may be necessary under the permit. The bylaw still requires some input from Planning Board and the goal is to have it ready to present at the 2021 Annual Town Meeting in order to meet the compliance requirement of the permit. I have signed on to a joint grant application with the Connecticut River Stormwater Coalition, of which we are a member, and the Napontet River Stormwater Coalition that will address nutrient analysis requirements in our MS4 permit. Our petroleum compliance tasks are up to date. No problems have been identified in monthly inspections except our need to have a Class C operator on site. I have completed this training, fulfilling this requirement and will serve as the Class C operator of our fuel dispensing system at the Highway Department. We had a surprise inspection at the transfer station by the DEP on July 31st, but no issues were raised.
Great.
That's about all I have, and I'll take questions.
Any questions for Randall?
I guess just, just one or maybe two. Just back on the Glendale Road, you said that that's actually all complete now. There were, I know at one point in time, and I haven't actually looked at it, but people were talking about where some of the mailboxes were placed or some of the poles or something making it difficult to walk around with strollers or wheelchairs. Is that an issue or is that okay?
It was all presented on the plan, which was available for review for a year or more. They're not ideal, but I think overall the project has provided pedestrian accommodations, a smooth road and drainage considerations. So all in all, a few mailboxes that don't look 100% is still, I think, a good thing.
Yeah, no, I think it was more, something was more just the, the, I don't know, something that was blocking the roadway or something, the sidewalk. I remember at some point somebody had talked to me about it, but it's been a while now, so it's probably been fixed. And then did I?
Nothing should have been blocking. It should have complied with ADA requirements.
Okay.
Though I know in the walkthrough with DOT, we didn't notice anything.
Great, okay. And did I hear you say you might do some paving on Hillside Meadow Drive?
Yeah, that's, that's one of my other projects that is approved for Chapter 90 money.
Now, so, so as, as I guess a follow-up on the, on the road issue with our famous East Street, is there not a way that something that's in terribly worse shape, that's got much more traffic, that that could take some level of priority for some kind of coating at least before the winter?
I mean, I guess it's, every, every road has a degradation curve, right? So the minute you pave it, it starts degrading over time. And you can do routine maintenance to try to keep that road at a, at a condition that is going to be less expensive than if you let it degrade further. So I, I guess it would depend on how much money you want to put into East Street. And once you put money into East Street, you're not putting money other places that would be preventative maintenance. So like I can do an over, I can do an overlay on Hillside Meadow right now. But if I wait, you may have to do a full-depth reclamation, which is going to increase the cost. So we can have a conversation about how much you'd like to put in. But as you will recall, I've asked for money over the last couple of years and we haven't found any funding to increase.
Yeah, yeah, no, I was, I was just thinking of, you know, I just realized that, you know, with the, with East Street not being really online until, you know, four years from now and just the use that that road gets and the shape that it's already in. I was just trying to see if there was some interim step that could help it out, at least cobble it through another, another year or so that.
Yeah, so, so a couple of years ago, Governor Baker released, I forget what they called. We referred to it as the pothole money. After a particularly bad winter, he released, I believe Southampton got about $30,000. And what was great about it is the procurement regulations weren't as strict as using Chapter 90 money. So I was able to overlay a few sections of East Street. So if some, some opportunity like that came up, I'd be more than happy to throw it at, throw it at East Street. But right now I want to, and I'm trying to keep on track with our, our, our plan for pavement.
Good, okay, no, thanks, thanks for that, just.
So Randall, hey, talking about East Street, what's your opinion about that lasting until 2025 without some major work?
Lasting in its current state?
Or worse.
Well, it's not going to. We're going to have to put, put things into it. We, we, we put a hot patch on it all the time to take care of potholes. But again, do, do we want to appropriate money to do some overlays on some of the, some of the worst sections?
I mean, it seems like want is going to turn into must if we have to wait five years. You know, like Michael Rosenberg was saying, I mean, I have a Jeep and I enjoy going down the East Street, but he doesn't like going down in his car, you know? So we may have to have a conversation if money. So we may have to have a conversation if money's become available.
Yeah, that's a long ways away.
Yeah, I agree.
And it is, as everybody knows, and you know, it's very highly used. So it's important.
Yeah.
And and also keep in the back of your minds, we're also going to need probably around $500,000 to actually design the reconstruction of East Street.
Okay, any other questions for Randall?
No, and just following up on the the earlier conversation about the Grant Committee. Randall, if you've got some thoughts of things that you might need at the Highway Department, get in touch with Ed in terms of that for the round two of COVID funny.
I've already mentioned the possibility of laptops for department heads. I think it would be good to have something in place should any one of the department heads actually contract COVID so that we would be able to work at home. I mean, I have a camera on my personal laptop, but I don't have one at the office, so it'd be nice to have some resources.
Yeah, okay. I agree. I'm kind of worried about the staffing levels other is before winter. I mean, you have concerns, is there a plan, is there anything we can do to help?
Um I've got a couple of applications. I'm hoping to get some people interviewed, but it's tough. One of the people that's out is my admin, so I'm struggling.
Right. Yeah.
So will you have will you have funds to temporarily replace those people?
How do you mean?
Well, I mean, the way our disability policy works, we we pay people a percentage while they're out of their salary, of their wages. And I'm asking, you know, to hire replacements for them while they're out. Are you in good shape with that?
We don't we don't hire replacements while people are out on medical.
So you so you are going, you're two people short right now?
Yep. We've been we've been people short for uh one to three people short for probably the last year and a half.
Okay.
Yeah, that's tough.
That that really hits you hard.
Yeah. One one last question, Randall, just because you were talking about supply chains and things that were kind of delayed because of COVID. Just wondering, as we're approaching winter season and what you've done with what your our agreement for the procurement of things like salt and sand and all that stuff, are they on board so that you're gonna get what you need for that?
Uh we we bid out through Franklin County Council of Governments. And I believe salt contracts will be up early in October. I tried to leave a little in the salt shed just in case we have an early early storm anyway, so we we have storm or twos worth in the salt shed right now. But we'll be ordering it as soon as the contracts go live.
Yeah, I was just hoping that they wouldn't have any delays too because of COVID for some reason, so.
Well, we'll cross our fingers.
Yeah, okay. Thanks.
Randall, thanks so much for coming and giving a report, appreciate it and for all your department does.
Thank you.
Okay, so as everybody, we're gonna have Charlie, can he give a report from EMD? We're actually really Board of Health is speaking tonight on behalf of the Board of Health. So again, everyone's okay with them just being on audio?
Yep.
Okay, Charlie, thank you very much for coming.
Good evening, everyone.
Hi there.
Well, I have a number of talking points and I think what we should end up with is a discussion about Cottage Avenue, if that's okay with you?
Sure, that is on the agenda and that's a the Board of Health's been dealing with a unsafe situation there. So absolutely, just start wherever you want to, Charlie.
Okay, well, let's take the slow stuff first. The Board of Health is in the process of developing animal regulations for the town of Southampton. This is not just the Board of Health. Once the Board of Health is comfortable, they're gonna be moving this forward to the Agricultural Committee for review. Once it gets through the Agricultural Committee, then it'll be probably the Planning Board and other boards will be able to chime in on this. These regulations are basically because of the amount of complaints we get relative to people with goats and horses and all the rest of that. And because we are just with the animal inspector, these complaints end up at the Board of Health at some point. This is gonna take several months to get put together, but I just want everybody sort of be aware of that's being discussed. The next thing I want to talk about is the our budget. And I understand what we're going through, but I'm still gonna bring the statement forward that we're short about $2,500 in our expense line item. This has to do with our activities of basically protecting the town. We're also short about $500 in our Sharp program. And as you know, our seniors, as well as other people that are dependent on syringes utilize this. I want to stress the fact that the Board of Health is encouraging everyone to get flu shots. There is a concern that we're gonna see an uptick in COVID when we get into the late fall/winter months. And we're hoping that if you get the flu shots, at least that'll address that disease hopefully so that we're not dealing with two diseases at the same time. The other part to this happens to be the discussion of Halloween. I sent you some information from the CDC. We've been sort of waiting to see what kind of information we were getting from the State Department of Public Health. We have not seen any. My suspicion, only because I used to work for DPH, is that they're probably gonna follow the CDC guideline, which is going to leave the Select Board and the Board of Health in this town in a position of how far do we want to go with advising people? At this point, I would follow the CDC guidance unless I see something else coming from the state. With that said, do you wish me to open up Cottage Street?
Let me just ask Charlie if people have any questions about what you've said so far.
I I just wanted to know, I agree with you about the flu shots, but how is it, how is the Board of Health getting that message out to the public?
One of the things that is very well is the fact that the state's reaching out to the public about this, which is saturating all the media, which is a plus. As the Board of Health in and of itself can certainly put something on the town's website. We can certainly post something on Facebook. But given that extent, I don't see a reason to go any further with this unless you all see something else we should touch on.
Well, I think that, you know, the Council on Aging has a newsletter and that's an audience you would want to reach with that, even though I'm, you know, I'm pretty sure they they are probably likely candidate. Robert Floyd and his infamous newsletter is a good vehicle.
Yes, the news.
Yes.
Also, the community boards, they've got a lot of visibility.
Yeah.
I will advise the help director to move forward with these.
Okay.
Can I, Maureen, can I just say something about that? And it's just from a personal experience. My wife and I have got our, we got our flu shots a couple of weeks ago. But while we were in there, we were talking, there was a person asking the question on, well, I don't want to get my flu shot too early because if the flu comes in February, March, whatever, it won't be as effective as as if I get my flu shot closer to when the flu season is. And the pharmacist, Becky, or Allison, no, you're just improving the antibodies you have. It doesn't start and stop when you get it and end it one season. It's continuous buildup of the antibodies in you. So if people are thinking, wait until, you know, November, December because it'll give me more protection, according to the pharmacist, that's not accurate. I don't want to, I don't want to play the pharmacist, but I always suggest they talk to their pharmacist on that or doctor.
Yeah, that's a great, that's a good thing to clarify, absolutely. Because that is one of the many, many myths out there about flu shots. You know, Charlie, as far as the budget, I know that the expense line is really short and I know the mileage for the health agent, health director comes out of the expense. I think it'd be really helpful if a budget sort of line item was put together. Like it would be so much easier for me to try to, you know, find or support additional funds if it was like, you know, each restaurant's surveyed twice a year and this was the mileage for this and housing inspections and perk test and whatever. But if it was, you know, broken down, this is what our expense line covers. It would be a lot, I I it would be a lot easier to support just having a little bit more detail than, you know, because I think all the departments are in the same boat in terms of needing additional money. I mean, it was a terrible year. So if the if the health director and whether the Board of Health could just give a little bit more detail to what's in the expense line and what would be sacrificed, I'd certainly appreciate that.
I I appreciate where you're coming from. Ed?
Yes.
The original budget that that the board submitted was broken out in more detail. But then it was rolled back to what we traditionally always do. Do you recall that?
Well, I remember that there was more line items in there. I don't remember more detail as far as what each line item was broken out to, but I can go back and look.
I remember seeing like Sharp separately, salaries separately, and then expenses are all lumped together. So it wasn't until actually the last Board of Health meeting that I realized that expenses were, that the mileage was rolled up into that. So it would be helpful to support it, knowing what exactly went into it. Obviously, there's a lot of travel on the part of the health agent. So anyway, I would I would certainly appreciate that. It'd be a lot easier to see support and so forth.
Ed, I want to circle back a couple of days.
Yeah. And and is there any updates on the expenditures from the CARES Act? Or should we be getting that from from Vicki?
I believe that will be coming out of Vicki and Ed.
Now, a question if I can. The CARES Act money, as I understand it, Charlie, cannot be used for administrative costs. Is that accurate?
My understanding that it can't be used for what is already historically an expense of the town.
Right. Unless the it's it swells because of COVID, like what, you know, John was talking about. Like there's there's a use for certain equipment and then there's a need that's accelerated because of COVID. So I think if you can make a case for it being particularly necessary because of COVID, then you can still do that, I believe.
I I think you're absolutely correct, Rainey. John, just to give you an example, we couldn't use the COVID that the CARES money to take and offset the mileage for the health agent witnessing perk test.
Because that's the normal process, but if she traveled more for COVID related, we could?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, so I think at some point we should get, I mean, it sounds like, you know, we're the CARES Act, I think we're just trying to make the process go a little bit, you know, better, more transparent and so forth. Because it seems like even departments that got funding aren't clear that they can go ahead and, you know, spend the funds. So I think that getting, it would be good to get an update on the CARES Act funding and and certainly let departments know that the line items have been approved if if they don't already know that.
Well, I I had mentioned, you know, Chris and I met with Vicki and I mentioned this at the Board of Health meeting. She gave us a a figure of about $50,000 of the $223,000 that we've already received. And, you know, just trying to get a handle on making certain that there are plans to spend all of the money, you know, and not have to return any. And if there's any possibility of shifting it around, if it needed to be shifted around, if it wasn't going to be spent in the categories that was originally planned, that we could kind of backfill with other things that are needed in the town that are that are that qualify under under that source. And and that's why I keep coming back to how much we spent, what do we have, where are we going with it? Because the, you know, I've worked with grants in my employment and the last thing I ever wanted to do was give it back.
Absolutely. So I mean, how how are we gonna get those answers? Ed, do you have those answers as far as being able to, if there's a change that's come about? I mean, we this was all put together during the, you know, very chaotic beginning of March, April, you know, May of, you know, trying to secure PPE, trying to secure a number of things. If things have settled out and they got a big shipment of, you know, PPE or something from Mima or elsewhere, I mean, can we find out if there's any shifting of the funds available? And, you know, Chris brought up the issue about all the money has to, the benefits of it have to be realized by the 30th of December. Can we get the answers to these things that both Chris and Francine have raised?
Yes, I've already reached out to the person and the state administration, his administration and finance office that basically heads this up and puts put to him the question of, okay, if we identify certain items that we are not gonna spend but were approved for in Phase 1, can we either tell you what we'd like to use those for instead and just reallocate them? Or can we identify them and say we'd like to give these back? And can we have that money also back in Phase 2? So I'm I'm waiting to hear back from him.
Okay, that's great. Any other questions so far?
Just following up on that one and then one for Charlie. You know, I think from my understanding of the webinar that I attended, there should be a financial report that's due in pretty soon on our first spending levels. And so maybe in our October, first of October meeting or something, we could have Vicki give us a copy of the report at least or something of what we've spent on that.
Yeah, it should be workable.
And then Charlie, you mentioned doing something with the Board of Health doing animal regulations for goats and horses and chickens. Can I assume that that does not include dogs because the bylaw committee had worked on the dog one?
I did not see anything in there that mentioned anything about dogs and cats or parrots.
Well, we didn't touch, we didn't touch those either. We were just dealing with dogs, but I just wanted to be sure we weren't overlapping. That's fine, thanks.
Okay, we also had to talk about the other agenda item that focused on one of the properties that the Board of Health has been trying to secure and that is Cottage Street. You want to talk about that now, Charlie? 29 Cottage Street, Cottage Avenue, I should say.
Okay, 29 Cottage Avenue had a major fire back in May and the house was totaled. The owner of the property lost the property to bankruptcy and the bank took over the property. At the time, the Board of Health's feeling was that the bank would proceed with boarding it up and securing it and so on and so forth. Unfortunately, that never happened. We started getting complaints from residents, and this is a residential neighborhood, very tightly living together there, about this building and about the fact of someone living in the garage. So on August 11th, the Board of Health ordered the building condemned and boarded up by the bank and the garage secured. The bank made an effort to board it up, but given the fact, and I think you've seen a couple of pictures I circulated, there's certain sections of the building where the walls are gone and there's no place to board, to take plywood and nail it up to close it up. So given that, the Board of Health ordered on August 19th that the building be razed and that the bank was required by September 15th to give us an action plan on how they were gonna accomplish this. And we gave them a drop dead date of October 1st to take the building down. As of September 15th, we have heard nothing back from the bank. And given the fact that it's a public nuisance in close proximity to other residents, we feel there's an emergency to move this forward. So the Board of Health is respectfully requesting the Board of, the Select Board to allow us to use Town Council to file an emergency order in court to have, one, the property vacated, two, to take and have it secured and order the bank to tear it down. And if the bank doesn't do it in a timely manner, and that'll be judged by the court, to allow the town of Southampton to go in and tear it down and put a lien on the property for cost.
Is is someone still living there, Charlie?
The problem we're having is the past resident seems to move into the garage and tries to stay there overnight. We've given him an order to vacate as the Board of Health. And what I'm understanding now is he's not living there, but he is frequencing the property and making the neighbors nervous.
Hmm. Well, it's also, you know, going into an unsafe structure. So I think it's not just about the anxiety of the, the neighbors. I think the safety issue is significant.
Charlie, is the garage structure safe where him going in and out of the garage is not an issue? Or is that unsafe too?
The garage is, is practically safe, John, based on what my observations are. I'm not a structural engineer, but it was not impacted by the fire.
Yeah. I'm just wondering if he's storing or trying to store whatever possessions he has left and just kind of get him out of there.
I understand that. He's got an order to vacate by the board of health, but an order to vacate means you can't live there. It doesn't mean you can't store your stuff there.
Right.
But from the bank's side of it, he no longer owns the property, so he's trespassing. But I don't see the bank taking any action.
Now, if I'm not mistaken, isn't that up for sale or it was up for sale after the fire just recently?
I heard it's up for sale. I think it's 58,000. If you're interested, I can get you connected.
But I mean, from a point of view, if somebody bought it and razed the house, you'd be, the board of health would be fine with that, right?
Sure. We just want the nuisance gone.
Okay.
Would that step, would the attorney be necessary if somebody purchased the property, Charlie?
That's an unknown question. I've seen people buy properties like this and still not take them down. So my experience has been get the court order.
Is there any barrier to asking him to leave because of the regulations or allowances because of COVID in terms of mortgages or people not, you know, being evicted?
Yes, there is. The governor signed a bill relative to eviction, but that has to do with landlord tenant disputes. This is not a landlord tenant dispute.
Okay.
So Charlie, I don't want to know the name, but is it a local bank or is it somebody out of the area?
I honestly don't have that in front of me, John, but I believe it's out of the area.
If it was a local bank, we could probably, you know, contact them as a board.
If it was a local bank, I would probably know who to contact. But I, I heard the name at one time during this whole thing when we put this together. In fact, you know what? Probably, no, I don't have it handy. I did write up the, it's not a local bank.
Yeah, my memory was it was an institution that was out of the area.
So. So any money we spent for legal fees, will that also be attached to the properties that when it's sold, we'll get that back?
If we get the attorney to frame the order correctly, any costs incurred would be part of the lien.
Well, that would make sense.
Yeah, that would make a lot of sense. That'd be a lot easier to support.
Yeah. Have we used local attorneys for this before, Charlie? Or do we go to our Boston attorneys?
Oh, boy, there's an interesting question, John. In my experience in Southampton, whenever we used a local attorney, it was because we were doing receiverships. In this particular case, and it was because I was actually tutoring the lawyers in receivership because of my background. But in this particular case, all you're looking for is a simple temporary restraining order against the bank and it would be KP Law I would use or the town would use.
So if we do nothing, knowing this information, I think we're going to make ourselves liable for something down the road. So.
And if the board of health is recommending this and you're coming here for our support, I think that we need to, we need to do that. I know that that's really the only coercive way of moving these properties. They will not move otherwise. So would somebody like to make a motion? And I'm assuming we'll ask that the, the funds be included as part of the lien?
So what, Charlie, what do we need the motion to say so it's, it's clear?
I move to authorize the board of health to use town council for the purpose of securing an emergency order pertaining to 29 Cottage Street.
Should we put the lien on that amount or no?
With any expenses recoverable from the, the owners of the property.
Lien on the property?
Yes.
And do we authorize up to a certain amount? Or do we just leave it open, given that the, it would be reimbursable funds?
We've got to be careful because the property is only worth so much.
Yeah. I'd favor putting a dollar amount on it somehow and not to exceed amount somehow.
Okay.
Do we have an idea?
That's where our lawyers will stop, at that dollar amount.
Well, at least check back in or whatever. Give us an update, I would hope.
Yes.
Does anybody, anybody have an idea what reasonable amount it is in this case?
I mean, is this a couple hour deal? Or is this, what do we know?
Yeah. Or is it $5,000 deal? Yeah.
Yeah.
It's, I mean, I can't speak for what the attorneys are going to charge, but I would think that they'd be basically just filing a motion and having a hearing. And hearings now are Zoom hearings. And I don't know, what are we talking here? Three hours, maybe?
Yeah.
What's the hourly rate, Ed?
I believe it's 185.
Okay.
So say a thousand dollars.
Yeah, I was going to say not to exceed a thousand dollars.
So I'll make, I'll make that motion with the maximum of a thousand dollars spent. If it's going to go over that, the attorney needs to come back to us for further approval. Sound reasonable?
I think it does.
Yeah.
Works for me.
Is there a second to John's motion?
I'll second it.
Okay. Further discussion, questions?
Yep. Chris, yep.
Yeah, John and Chris. Any further questions?
I, not, not about this motion, but I need to forewarn you that if the bank fails to raise this and the town, and the town's authorized by the court to do it, there's going to be expenses in taking the building down. Now, we haven't gotten there yet, but I wanted people to understand that that's out there.
Now, Charlie, we've done this before, fairly recently, I believe, with a property. Did we get a contractor or somebody to go in there, demolish it and put that amount against the property or something like that?
The highway department has, has actually helped in some of these properties.
We, we've had all kinds of scenario, John, over the years. We've had the highway department clean up properties and take that cost and put it against the properties. There's, there's a lot of different scenarios there.
Well, it's logical that we take this first step. I mean, this is, and, you know, try to force the bank to, to raise the property. So we have a motion and second. Any further question or discussion about this property?
Just, well, just a question related, I guess. I mean, I realize we're talking about the property, but I guess I would just like some, some assurance that this person has got a place to go. If not his garage.
All, all I can say is I've heard through the police department, who's spoken to neighbors, that he has moved in with a, somebody in Westfield.
Okay.
We got to remember, Chris, this is no longer his garage.
No, I understand that, but I think there's a, a human factor here too that we ought to not ignore.
Yeah, there's some social service that could be brought in.
Right.
Yeah. I mean, I think that's my experience with board of health is that's usually part of the process.
Okay.
Okay. All those in favor of authorizing a thousand dollars of legal funds for the 29 Cottage Jeff?
Okay. Fishman, aye.
Foul's aye.
Mark, aye. Matt is still muted.
Abstaining.
You're abstaining, Matt?
Yeah, because I wasn't here for the, I don't, I don't really know what we're talking about. So.
Okay, thank you. Welcome back.
I'm going to rejoin now, but I'm going to abstain from that.
Okay. Anybody, do we get through everyone here? Groden, aye?
Yep. Now you got everybody.
Who else is aye with Matt abstaining? Charlie, any other updates or anybody have any questions for Charlie or the board of health?
No, I had asked, I had asked at the meeting about seeing the MOU that was done.
Oh, yeah.
Like to request that.
I will get that sent to you, Francine.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Charlie? Charlie, thanks very much for your patience and for joining us.
You guys have a good evening.
You too.
Thank you, Charlie.
Okay. So we've been jumping around a fair amount on the agenda. So let's go back to see, pick up where we were. We did the assignments, health department, we had all the presentations, the Easter.
There's one assignment that you didn't get to.
Which one? Oh, the signing of the, yep, signing of the warrant. So I guess there was a, not, I wasn't the only one that assumed that once the clerk was appointed, that that person was the automatic signer, but that's not the case. So we want to identify a signer of the warrants and a backup person as well. So who would like to be authorized to do that? Chris and another board member?
I did it before. If you want me, I can go in there all day. I'm fine with it if Chris isn't available.
Okay. Anybody else have an interest in that? Or everybody okay with Chris as the clerk and then John as a backup?
Sure. Yeah, I don't, I don't mind doing it. Francine gave me a, a tutorial, but it'll, it'll, it'll help me understand the budget a lot better too by looking at some of this. So that's, that's fine. I don't mind doing it.
Yeah. And if you're not available, just let me know, Chris.
Sure thing. Thanks.
Would somebody make a motion then for that?
I move that Chris be appointed the primary document signer with John as the backup.
For a second?
Second.
Okay. Francine and then Matt. Any further questions, discussion? All those in favor?
Tushman, aye.
Roland, aye.
And Groden, aye. Thank you. Thank you for doing that, both of you. We next have reports and the second board reports, if they could be fairly brief, that would be helpful.
I don't have anything meaningful to report.
Okay, I'll, I'll go. I'll try to go quickly. The regional school committee elected new officers and I'm happy to report and congratulate three South Hampton residents. Margaret Larson is the new chair of the school board. Tammy Walus was elected as the secretary of the committee and Bill Curran was elected to the school council. Just to let everyone know, the agreement was finalized with the Hampshire Regional Teachers Union and it was expected to pass by vote, by vote of the teachers' union on September 15th. I've not heard otherwise, so I'm assuming that that had passed. You know, school started last week and students were assigned appointments to pick up their materials and technology so that their remote classes could be getting scheduled. The business manager reported that she's close to closing out fiscal year 20. She also expects that there are going to be many additional transportation costs for fiscal year 21 resulting from increased trips since students will be transported for morning and afternoon sessions. So we're looking at like almost double transportation here to maintain the smaller class numbers. There's sufficient room in most buses during the first quarter to accommodate school choice students at no cost. With so many moving parts, the school committee approved the calendar on a quarterly basis and not on an annual basis as, as been the practice because the ground is shifting every day. The committee voted to require a liability consent form from the parents who will transport students to and from athletic events. This consent form holds the district harmless in the event of an accident. I'm pleased to say that the free lunch program is going to continue through December 31st, providing breakfast and lunch either in, in school or at home to students for up to five days per week. Just an update now on the, on the process of identifying an interim superintendent. They had a meeting on September 15th. I watched the, as they interviewed the two finalists for the position and the subsequent discussion among the five towns of the region. The candidates were Michael Sullivan and William Bays. And at that time, there was no decision, no decision could be reached among the five joint committee members. We subsequently learned that William Bays withdrew his application for consideration and may resubmit when we conduct the permanent superintendent search. The joint committee went into executive session. This was as of last night. So I don't have an outcome to report of their decision, whether they reached one or not on the other candidate. I just want to mention that the police screening that I participated in along with three other community representatives and two police officers for a part-time police, police officer position has concluded. We met and graded nine candidates with a final decision to be made by the chief of police. And again, I want to compliment the chief and his team for a well-organized process. Looking forward to welcoming whomever the chief chooses as his final candidate. And that's it. Thank you.
Thanks, Francine. Who, who else would like to report off?
I can do a short one. There was a concom meeting last evening, basically routine business, pretty much on notice of intent and a couple of issues around an enforcement order. And basically talking about the, the wetlands bylaw. And so again, this is the bylaw from, that was proposed back in 2017 that is essentially the, the law itself, but there are a couple of sections that have been strengthened, I guess I would say regarding enforcement. And so that would be, probably we'll do a little bit of an information sheet to be handed out to voters to let them know what's, what's different about it, I guess, because I, it's a long thing to read. And I'm not volunteering to read this motion at this town meeting. But anyway, so that was basically that. We had a, excuse me, a master plan meeting last night as well and had our first look at the data from, with our PVPC consultant and found some interesting things. I think we have some things that kind of are very obvious on the paper that we saw from the various graphs, the various responses that he was putting forth. We're going to have him do a little bit deeper dive on a couple of questions with the raw data and see if we can cross tab some things, either demographically or age-wise, that would make some sense related to housing issues and some of the other things. But I'd say that there, you know, there, we'll see, once we're done with this, I think we'll see a mandate. I don't think it's going to be, what, what should I say, Francine? An overwhelming, oh my God, this is what we have to do. But I think it'll be clear that there are two or three priorities that seem to be rising to the top and concerns that residents have. And just to reiterate, we had 896 responses. So once again, thank you to everybody that got the word out and took the time to respond. That's really great. And then just lastly, I already mentioned basically on this, the grant ad hoc grant search committee, we've had our second meeting and spent some time actually listening to the chief of police, Ian, who came to talk about the issue with the police radio repeater situation on Mount Tom and trying to look at a, a way of relocating that to a more accessible location and looking for some grant money for that, which probably will not come out of the COVID money. But there is some other possibilities that maybe we can explore there. But then we spent time looking at how we get ready for, for phase two or round two of this COVID money, which is another some 300, some $300,000. And so as I mentioned, Ed is reaching out to those that already were allocated funds in the first round to make sure they understand what they've got and figure out maybe if their needs have changed, if their spending pattern is going to be less than what they had anticipated or something. We need to know that so that we can figure out how to use it and not lose it. And then, as I mentioned, Matt, and I don't know with your announcement earlier, are you still going to have time to reach out to the school at all?
Um, I'm gonna, I'm gonna try to. I, I've been, it's, it's on my list of things to do for sure.
Well, thanks. And let me know if you can. We'll figure out something. But we were trying to reach out and make sure that the school, COA, library and, and others, you know, just, you know, they weren't just sitting there with not asking for things that they might need. And so we're going to be, trying to be sure that they're. And so we're going to be, trying to be sure that they're, they're fully informed and hopefully have some requests that we can go forward with. And that's about it, I think. We'll meet again on October 1st.
Great. Anybody else?
Yeah, I've got several items, so I'll go through them as quick as possible. The Finance Committee, our first meeting is next week, the 28th at 5:30 with our new members since the election. Public Safety Complex Committee, setting up a meeting. We'll have it within the next two weeks, so when I get an exact date, I'll get back to you. I don't see it on the agenda, short-term, long-term, RFP. And I have been working back and forth on that. We've got a date of next Monday where the revamp one's going to go out and be posted again. So hopefully, and I'm going to reach out to a bunch of vendors so we can have better response this time. This morning, I attended the PVPC MPO monthly meeting. It had a lot of items on there. I won't go over all of them, but what I thought was interesting is they reviewed the top 100 crash sites in Massachusetts and 10 of the top 100 are in the Pioneer Valley. And some of you probably recognize Springfield, Oyo, Jacobia and Westfield were on there. Southampton wasn't on there, luckily. And the number one in the Pioneer Valley area for crash sites is the exit Springfield. So that was interesting. They're actually developing an interactive site. They're starting to use a drone. And when they get it up and going, you're going to be able to click on any of these sites and actually see what's going on, see the traffic flow. And they sampled it today and you can see where people are doing what I call a California stop. They roll up to the stop sign, just roll right around it and keep going. And they were saying how they want to correct some of those issues by having the drone and the video, they're going to be able to kind of design around that. So that was interesting. They're doing a mission reduction study, which tracks and measures total emissions, you know, target versus actual and various MPO locations. They're doing a traffic counting program. I'm sure Randall knows about that. So if we wanted to traffic count a certain area, we could ask them to come in, bring in their machines and their hoses they put across. But they're all booked up till spring. Planning Board, they met on the 16th. Next meeting's on 10/7. They reorganize. Paul Demon is staying as the Chair, Paul Fergal as the Vice Chair. But there was a public hearing. It was on Dreamers, which is the adult cannabis location that's going into the Red Rock Shop. I know Chris was in on that meeting as well. And I thought it was a very good presentation. And I'll read over a couple of highlights, but they posted the presentation on the planning board site. So if you get a chance, go in, take a look at it. Ezra Pazibak, who's a consultant out of Northampton, he did the PowerPoint. He did an excellent job. And the owner is Vulcan Polital, who lives in Southampton. And he appeared before us to get the permits and everything. So they're all set. And it's going to be a marijuana-only, adult marijuana-only. No medical marijuana patients can use that unless you go in as an adult over 21, but no medical marijuana cards will be used or accepted there. So they went over the layout of the interior, the security system, which Hackworth and Town is doing, the odor control system, which, which was very interesting, where no odor will really come out of the building. It's just going to be recycled through the HVAC special filter system. They went over how the waste is disposed of. Say a brownie falls on the ground and you can't reuse it. They went over the process of how they grind it, mix it with, you know, coffee or other things. And then it's taken in the waste right to the landfill by the manager. It's not put out in a trash can or anything behind there. So it's a very interesting slide. They also reiterated the, the town's getting 3% sales tax on the gross sales. We're also getting that 3% community fee, so we're getting 6% back. They also did the traffic estimates. And granted, when it first opens up, there's going to be more traffic, but they did, in the peak hour during a weekday, they're only talking roughly four or five people coming in and out an hour, where Saturday and Sunday it will be more because supposedly Saturday is the chosen day for people going in buying cannabis. And Larry Smith, who's the planning board consultant, he did all the consulting on this for the planning board. He's going to recommend some conditions that they need, the Dreamers need to meet before they can open it up. And he is going to have those conditions to the consultant as well as to the planning board. So at the next meeting on October 7th, they're going to go over the conditions and decide what conditions they want to put on the opening. There's no projected opening date yet because there's a lot of steps still with the state that they have to go through once they go through this process with the planning board. There's one thing else in here.
So John, it didn't, it did or didn't pass? Are they waiting to make?
They're going through. They got all the permits and everything. So we've already approved it through the Select Board and the Planning Board. It was just a public hearing to hear from the public and there was nothing that was brought up that deterred it. They asked about being close to the childcare center that's in there, but the way the law is written, it's got to be a K kindergarten up. This is a preschool place, so it didn't apply to, trying to think of the name of the place there.
Dreamers.
Peanuts.
Peanuts, yes. So it didn't apply because they don't accept kindergarten upward. They just accept the infants.
Thanks, John. Any other questions for John?
Oh, no. It's just going to say Dreamers there. They can only have two signs, one on the building and one on the road. It's just going to say Dreamers. No logos, nothing to indicate what's in there. It's going to be between Mikell's and the Solotar managers.
Yep. And just to reiterate, it was a great presentation. It was very thorough by their consultant and I believe it was recorded. So anybody that wanted to go on the East Hampton media side, I think you can see or hear the recording, watch it as well.
It's a good point, but it was a great presentation.
Great. So Council of Beijing hasn't met since we met and Board of Health, Charlie covered the materials from the Board of Health meeting last week. Open Space also met last week and it was a lot of routine business, but there's criteria for what would make a site desirable for maintaining open space. And there's a process right now where members have all been, have selected maps to sort of do a deeper dive on different projects. And then there's continuing correspondence with landowners relative to conservation opportunities. So that's pretty much it. Chris, did you want to add anything to that? I know you were at the meeting also.
No, that's fine.
Okay. All right. So if nobody has any other questions, then we'll ask for the Town Administrator Report.
Sure. Let's see. Barbara Golden reports at the Edwards Library. Limited browsing, which started on Wednesdays only, beginning on September 9th, has been very well received and is going well. The children's section is open to families by appointment from 10:00 AM to noon and the rest of the library is open for limited browsing from 1:00 PM to 4:00 PM on Wednesdays. Arrows are marked on the floor to show the allowed traffic pattern and please call the library at 413-527-9480 for any further information or for an appointment to go through the children's section. I have a meeting with Derek Chomiac from Energy Resources, which is the vendor Eversource uses for their free energy audits next week. I will take him around the Town Hall, the fire and police stations, the highway garage, the library and Tenora School. This will be the start of the energy audit that we need for the Green Communities Grant Use of Funds. And then I'd like to remind our residents that the Water Commissioners have put into place voluntary water restrictions. A, limit all non-essential water use and no outdoor automatic sprinkler use between the hours of 7:00 AM and 7:00 PM seven days a week. And B, please restrict outdoor water usage to no more than two days per week. We hope this will result in a reduction in water use. If not, we will have to consider implementation of mandatory water restrictions. We thank you in advance for helping us conserve and protect our water supply. And I will just remind you that due to the drought and the dryness and the winds, especially over the next couple of days that are expected from the tropical storm off the coast, that we're also in a high fire conditions also. So be careful if you're having any outdoor fires. Then also, I have reached out to the City of Westfield concerning our animal control intermunicipal agreement and they have sent us an agreement to renew. I will place this on the agenda for the October 6th meeting. And then upcoming Select Board meetings on October 6th and 20th. And that's it.
Yeah, and next Tuesday for an hour.
Yes.
Okay, any questions for Ed? Okay, so I guess next we talk about the purchase and sale agreement for 93 College Highway. And we just got a document today from our attorney and a separate document from the packet that had information, revised purchase and sale agreement.
Yes, with some edits that the attorney for the Fletcher's had asked to be considered.
Okay, so this is the response from our attorney in this document that has the teal and the highlighted?
It is what our attorney got back from Attorney Penny for the Fletcher's. What's in the teal is their request for additional wording.
Okay, but this hasn't, our attorneys haven't chimed in on this edit?
No, I have, haven't been able to, Katie sent it along, but I have not had a chance to talk with her as of yet.
Okay. Did everybody get a chance to look at it?
I have some of my own concerns about the requested edit and the wording. In my opinion, it, you know, limits what that drainage easement can or may be used for in the future and some other items, but I'll, I reserve the rest of my comments for after I am able to actually talk with our attorney about it.
Okay. Yeah, I had some similar concerns. What would you, would anybody like to discuss this document that we got? Again, it hasn't been vetted, so to speak, by our own attorney. Is there actually a closing date already set? Are we backing into this somewhat?
Yes. Oh, God. It was in a...
27th rings a bell, but it could be 29th or something.
Yeah.
It was a date in October that...
I thought it was September.
Well, originally it was September, but they've been, because of some of the requested changes to the purchase and sale and some of the questions about the title or the deed, I know Attorney Penny had asked if, yeah, let's see, no. If a date in October was possible.
Do we have one yet, do you know, Ed?
What's that?
Do we have a date yet?
Well, it was suggested, like I say, I can go look. It was a date in October. Let me go take a look for a closing. Hang on, I'll be right back.
Okay. Does anybody have any comments about the document at all? I mean, I think that obviously the changing identical to substantially similar is a, is a, you know, good edit, but the drainage is of concerns. But again, I think that our attorney needs to chime in. That was, is that document is also the right of first refusal document that was sent out. And the concern they have of that is the address listed in that is 83, not 93. So I'm not sure how important that is. Sounds important, but...
I would, I would think so.
So that was the other question I had. Pardon?
I think that's important.
Yep. So I think those, I'm assuming that this both, at this point, needs to go back to KP Law.
Definitely, because this is substantially different. I mean, from what she's put in, she's certainly representing the purchase very well.
Right, right, right. I think that the issue is, a big issue is about that drainage, which is, you know, the root of the problem here. So, all right, any other comments? I don't think, I don't know that we should say too much about it anyway because it's a draft.
The 83, sorry, but the 83 College Highway isn't, isn't referring to that parcel, though. That's the butter, right? So is that not right or?
Yeah, I mean, 83 is not the parcel that, it's 93.
Right. But it's the butter that is getting their right of first refusal. Here, the TH.
I think, yes, that's what it says.
And that's where they are, at 83.
Oh, okay. Okay, so I, unless anybody feels that you want to talk about this further, I think, you know, having a date would be helpful to know what timeframe we're working with. But I think, you know, if everybody's okay, we should probably just move on.
And so when we bring it up, the lawyers will have, they have chimed in on this.
Yeah, and the proposal was to provide for a closing date by October 16th.
Okay. Okay, so the next step is to KP Law to look at this and, and the right of first refusal is actually 83, which is the butter.
Correct.
Okay. All right, then let's just move on. Thank you for checking on that, Ed.
You're welcome.
So next up on the agenda then is, you already mentioned about the Doers Grant. Anything more you want to say about that?
No, that would cover it at this point.
Okay. I just got a email from Cheryl Fletcher saying that she tried to call in. I don't know if, I guess I can just encourage her. Did she, was she waiting in the waiting room?
She's in the waiting room now. Yep. There we go.
I just said, let me in.
Hi, Cheryl. How are you?
Good. Sorry. Can you hear me or no?
Yes.
Okay. So the, I didn't hear, I was trying to get in here to dial in, so I'm, I don't know if Ed found the date for October.
October 16th.
Yep. And that's fine with us. The reason that the two attorneys had put it out to October was because the Hackworths have to sign off on that right of first refusal and Mary Penny didn't know if Mr. Gibson had gone over to Hackworths yet to talk to them and in case they need time to think about it, because they have the right to bid on it with this right of first refusal. So, and then the wording on the drainage easement was just what we were, I mean, Mr. Gibson's right, we are trying to limit it because we don't want to be in the same position with the future development on 10, that if there's a way to at least assure us that there won't be, you know, an increased volume of water going down through that drainage easement that we're in a similar situation than we're in right now. That's the whole point. So that's what the wording changed. They went back and forth quite a few times and so we, we were trying really hard not to keep, I mean, some of the wording changes is really insignificant. I think the difference is we would like to see the wording in the easement and KP Law doesn't want it in the easement. They're saying that we would have enough protection in the purchase and sale. And so, you know, when I talked to Mary Penny this morning, she said that, she said, well, I'm going to send this back, so I don't know where it stands. I know they were going back and forth on really just terminology. So my understanding, that was, that was it, because the rest of the items were either being resolved or I think the right of first refusal is the biggest thing, because if, if Hackworths decide they, they want it, I don't know, you know, do you folks say, then you have to match the, you know, match our bid or what? So and there's no timeframe listed on that right of first refusal to give them, but I would assume professional courtesy, they might not even know about it. You don't, you know, they probably say, we need to find out what this is. So, and Mary Penny had asked me if we had gone over and I said, I didn't think that was appropriate. I mean, we know them, but I didn't think it was really up to us to go over and say, you know, hey, do you know you have a right of first refusal? hey, do you know you have a right of first refusal on this land? So she thought Mr. Gibson was taking care of that, so.
Yeah, but we just got some further changes on even the language in the right of first refusal today, so.
No, the only change was, the only change from KP Law was there was no reference to the deed.
Okay.
So you had to have a reference to the deed. So that's what I mean. It's, it's really small stuff. And I'm just concerned that, you know, the more the lawyers keep, I mean, there had to be a reference to the deed. That's the only change on the right of first refusal, was a reference parcel.
All right, Ed, so that's something that looks like it's, after it's reviewed, since it was just edited, that that can be addressed. And then we have to sort of go with the guidance of KP relative to the language and the drainage. We can't increase our own liability around that. But I understand that that's at the heart of the problem. So anyway, we're, you know, hoping for the October 16th. And with the only couple of things left, hopefully things will, you know, come to a place of agreement here, okay?
Yep.
Sounds good. Any other questions about 93 College Highway? Thanks for jumping on, Cheryl.
Okay, yeah.
We'll go back then to the agenda item we had moved on to, which is, I just asked if you wanted to say anything more about the doers grant. You have the energy audit planned. Is there anything else you want to say about that, Ed?
No, that's the next thing we need to do at this point in time. So that's all I have to report for now. After we start that process, I'll probably have more.
Okay. And I had asked for the PEG equipment to be on there, but it's, you know, it's actually on for the town meeting. So unless anybody has any questions, I just didn't know if there were any updates. But I don't imagine there are, since the funding hasn't been voted on, right? Is that true?
Correct.
Okay, does anybody want to ask a question or say anything about the Hampton Media PEG equipment? Okay, then we can keep moving on here. Approval of employee for short-term disability.
And we haven't received the paperwork yet, so we can skip over that one.
Okay. Planning board zoning application form approval.
And I reached back out to Paul Demon and had asked him, because the question had come up at the last select board meeting, if they had actually reached out or got any input from the zoning board of appeals, since the zoning board of appeals is also listed on there, so they can be used. And he said that they had not at the time, but he has since reached out to the ZBA to see if they have any comment. And I have not heard back since he let me know that.
Okay, any questions about that? Okay, so next is the Halloween. We did discuss this, Charlie chimed in on that. I would, I think we agreed that we'd like to hear from the police on that. Does anybody want to take any action on that? Or we agreed, I think we're going to bring it up on the 6th, when we actually have time to read the CDC and also hear from our police chief. CARES Act funding?
Yes, in the, in the process of working with the state to get some answers in some of those gray areas that we have brought up, which I hope I will hear back from Heath, probably tomorrow at the latest, to answer those. And then working on compiling the list of what we actually have spent here up until June 30th for fiscal year '21, and getting the list of approved items for Phase 1 out to the different department heads. So they can look at it and let us know what they, what they have spent off of that, or think they have spent off of it, what they still plan to spend off of it. And what, at this point in time, don't plan to spend off of it. So we can move forward in whether we can take a look at transferring those funds or telling the state that we intend not to use those and give them back so they're eligible back in Phase 2. And then as, as part of that process, also asking them to start thinking about what their needs may be in the Phase 2 application.
Okay. So do all the departments that did receive funding from the CARES Act, are they aware of the award, grant award?
I think, I think other than talking with the fire department about a few of them, all the other departments are, were aware of the award. And of course, for most of them, it was just a, it was pretty general. It was the Plexiglas, it was hand sanitizer, it was cleaning masks and so forth. Some of the bigger items were actually put in for, by the police department. And they still, they still intend to move forward on those with the remote dispatch, which is my memory, actually, I've got it here. Remote dispatch was $19,723. So if they did become infected, they could run the dispatch function from somewhere else other than the actual dispatch room. If it had to be closed down to be de- cleaned, the 12 portable police radios for UHF, still intends to move forward with it. The five tri-band portable radios, which were actually to be shared between police, fire, and highway, still intends to move forward with that. And, and those are some of the biggest items. That right there is about, you know, about $60,000.
You know, you raised the remote dispatch. I think likewise for the town hall offices, in the event that they should be closed for any period of time. Is there any way, is our phone system upgraded so that people could receive the calls directly rather than, you know, listening to voice messages and, you know, residents calling and getting a, a message machine rather than actually getting to a person?
I can look at that for Phase 2.
I would think that would be just as important, yeah.
Yeah, because one of the things that we, we had talked about for Phase 2 would be, you know, laptops for some of the department heads. So if we had to go remotely again, you know, we had that capability.
And also having the camera, you know, so that it could be video too, like Randall had suggested.
Right.
Yep, and, and actually Randall's, I'll skip it, skip it ahead to the, one of the next ones. But Randall's one of the ones that is on deck for having his PC replaced. And even though it's a desktop, one of the items, and I hadn't thought about this, you know, you know, before when we put together the, the process of going through and systematically replacing the computers if needed. But one of the things that I asked for was to actually include with the desktop was speakers and a webcam. So even at the existing desktops, they will be able to participate in Zoom type meetings. It's like, when I, when I, when I do these, I actually come in, well, I'll either go upstairs to the second floor meeting room, or I'll come in here to the first floor meeting room so I can plug into the internet access jack and, and use the laptop and use that. But if I participate from my desk in my office, I don't have the webcam capability. So I'm, I'm able to dial, basically sign in and use my desktop. I can see those other ones, people that are participating. But for my voice, I have to utilize my phone.
Wow, that's tough. Yeah. Okay, so any other questions about CARES Act?
And we were going to get a detailed accounting, right?
Yes.
Okay, of all the expenditures, thank you.
The next agenda item is IT status updates for town hall. What's happening with the server and any of the other upgrades?
The server is being loaded with everything right now. I do have to take some time and go down and make a total list off the existing server of all the existing usernames, usernames by the department. Because actually, a lot, a lot of them are old and two and three people old. So all that information will be updated when, for the new server and the new logins. And originally, we had thought that we would wait till after the server was in to start doing some of the PC replacements or PC upgrades. But we have actually started slowly doing that now because some of the PCs have gotten so slow or with the other issues that found it necessary to actually move forward and, and start the process of swapping out some of those PCs. And there's some that will actually get replacements, that are some that are not as old, that are eligible. We may be able to save some funding if they're, you know, only three or four years old by replacing the hard drives. But we have started ordering the PCs for the replacement units.
Any questions for Ed about the current IT setup at town hall?
Just, just a question in terms of who's going to be in charge of putting things up on the website these days and when we might think about a revamp of our website. I know you said somebody from the library was going to help us on that, but are they going to be posting stuff, or?
It's, it's the vendor that actually takes care of the library site. So yes, we have started utilizing them. So now we're paying to have that service done where, when Art was doing it, it was for free. So basically, the request comes to me and I send that along. And it's, there's been a couple of glitches in it, but actually, it's started to go fairly smoothly as far as that goes.
Good, and are they going to, at some point, work on a redesign of the website too, or is that not them?
Well, redesign that website is about between $10,000 and $11,000. So, I mean, one of the things I was thinking of putting in for the IT grant again this year was the website redesign. But because we got funding last year, through that, we won't be eligible. But I'll keep my eyes open for, you know, other grants to be able to do that. Because one, one of the things I'd like, and there are some website designs out there that are, I'm going to call it more, when I say user-friendly, I don't necessarily mean the end user that's searching the website. But there are some programs out there that are much easier for, whether it's myself as a department head or an administrative assistant to actually take responsibility for some of that webpage and be able to update it rather than having, you know, someone specifically, you know, do that. And, and while I think about it, let me go back to, you know, the, the IT update. And I'll just let you know that the, the new firewall and backup system that we had received funding for from, through that IT grant, that has been, that's been accomplished. And one of the other items that has been done in the last month after that firewall was updated, the, the Wi-Fi system that had been so kindly donated to the town by Art Lawrence was replaced with a more secure and up-to-date system. So hopefully, that will serve at least part of the building in a stronger fashion than the old one did.
Mm-hmm, great.
I know that these updates are a huge employee satisfaction measure relative to the speed of computers. And it's been very frustrating. So if this can just keep moving on and get this server fully operational and all the applications updated, that would be a huge help.
Oh, absolutely. And when it's actually pretty much accomplished, I will probably be coming back to the select board and, and asking to put some parameters and, shall we say, requirements or restrictions on who can make changes to the programs and access to the server.
Hmm. And Ed, this is all going to be done long before the November election, right? So we don't have to worry about things going down at election time when we've got to get messages out and so forth.
Well, part of this whole program, both for, whether it's computer changes or the server itself, will be, I will be putting out a message to all the end users of what do you have coming up, you know, for big projects? Whether that's closing the books at the end of the year, whether that's sending out real estate bills or water department bills, you know, or if you've got an election, you know, coming. You know, to some extent, as far as the server goes, we can, we can pretty much tailor that and departmentalize that, so not everyone comes, all comes over at once. But replacing the PCs will be, you know, a little more touchy as far as that goes.
Yeah.
Yeah, so it's, yes, it is. It's going to be a very big project.
Yep. Okay, so any other necessary business that cannot wait until the next regular meeting? Next week is a quick meeting, and then the 6th is the regular select board meeting. I just have a couple of things, if nobody else does. First of all, I just wanted to ask, we talked about the town meeting tonight. We talked about it being a different location than the Bree Field. There was a lot of really good work done by a committee that put together a really safe and well-organized town meeting. I don't know if that's the plan, is to, if those people are willing to reassemble and kind of look at what was done. And, but is that, is that your understanding, Ed, or?
That was really planned to reach out, you know, especially now that we will be, it looks like we'll be utilizing a different site and going through everything again, just to fine-tune and tweak everything and to adjust it to, you know, a new location.
Okay. The other thing is the open space and recreation plan. You didn't include that in your town administrative report, but it is coming to a close in terms of being done. I think the next step is to have Ed's ADA report, which I think you said you'd be able to get done this week and send it over to, I'm drawing a blank, Cormia Ken from TVPC. And then hopefully, I think the target date is by the end of, is it October, to have that completely done?
Yes, and, and I have visited all the sites. It's just the fact that unfortunately, from the information that they had from the last one, was not in an editable format. So I have to go in and start a template for, for each site and type everything in. So that's what I'm doing now, but.
Okay. Well, hopefully, your administrative assistant is able to help with that. I mean, that's a lot of just copying over and updating.
And I've actually just committed to the going before the conservation commission for their first meeting in October and giving them, you know, basically the update and sharing the, the plan with them to hopefully get their blessing.
Okay, and the other thing is the hazard mitigation, I'm trying to think of that initials, but the hazard mitigation vulnerability grant, anyway.
MVP.
Pardon me?
The MVP.
So much easier, thank you. So that is waiting for a group of people to assemble, to work with Fosun O'Neal, to put together a project for- So that is waiting for a group of people to assemble, to work with Fosun O'Neil, to put together a project for to apply for funding for that project. Is that what, is that where that is right now, Ed?
Yes, it is. And thank you for reminding me because at the October 6th meeting, I will have a list of basically boards or committees that we should be reaching out to to get individuals to represent. And hopefully, like I say, it's, as I look at it, it's probably 80 to 85% of the same representation that was for the recreation and open space update that we just went through. So I'm hoping that a number of people that were, had volunteered and helped out with that will be willing to carry over and help out with this.
Okay. We might want to bring in some additional people, especially, I know Charlie's mentioned a number of possibilities for this grant. I think that it really does involve emergency management, flood prevention, things like that. So I just, I think we'll have to look carefully at the project and at what point we would have a meeting with representatives from Fosun O'Neil.
Yes.
Okay. And the last thing I just wanted to mention is, you know, we've talked before, Ed, about, I think when in the past, you would typically have department head meetings after a select board meeting to kind of share updates and things that we talked about and votes that were made and that sort of thing. And I think a few months ago, we talked about requesting those to continue, just to keep the communication lines open. And I was just wondering if that's happened, if you're able and willing to have that happen?
Yeah, in fact, I'm going to, I meant to send it out today. And I got interrupted and didn't get it out, but I'm going to try to have one on this Thursday.
Okay, good. I just think it's, you know, there's a lot of business that happens and I just think it's good for people to come together. I mean, we have a couple Zoom licenses and so it just makes sense to try to have a follow-up.
Yeah.
You know, yeah. Okay, so that brings us then to, I think, the warrants since we have no PCFs and no licenses and permits. So Chris, did you sign them this time around?
No, I did not.
Okay, Francine. Oh, that's right, because you were just voting in.
This will be my last one. Okay. P warrant, P 21-12 for $291,987.91. And then PD payroll deduction, 21-12 for $47,906.15.
Okay, any questions about the warrants? They were in our packet? Okay, then no other documents. So the minutes, we have two sets of minutes, June 9th and June 23rd. Did everybody get a chance to look at those?
You know, I forgot. I didn't do that.
I did, and I made some comments. I wrote them on a piece of paper. Now I can't find the paper.
There are a couple of typos that I remembered and I can't find where I found them neither too.
Do we want to put this on for next time or for the sixth?
Oh, no, it wasn't really. Mine wasn't a big deal. I could remember two names that were, but I can't remember, I had marked where they were exactly.
Why don't we just throw it on next Tuesdays?
Yeah.
I can do that.
Are you okay if I send, send what I found to Ed and then he can just correct it and reissue this and then we? Are you okay with that?
Well, if it's just sort of minor grammatical thing, yeah. It's not content at all. Yeah, it sounds all right. Okay, so we'll add those to October 6th. Any questions about the pending items, dog complaint? Is that still a problem, by the way?
I haven't heard anything, but let me check and find out and make sure.
Okay. And then Green Communities, you already updated Charter Building. Nothing from Charter. That's longstanding. And then Clearwater Woodland Boundary. What is happening with that, Ed? They were supposed to that comes up every once in a while in the Open Space Review Committee, whether or not the boundary on the Beagle Club has been determined. Were you going to meet with a couple of the members there, but it just, you know, didn't happen because of COVID?
My intent is to go out there and actually mark off the parts of the fence that need further, they know what section has to be moved.
Okay. Well, it's going to be nice fall weather before it gets snowy weather. So that would be something worth, you know, picking a date and going for a nice fall walk.
Yes, because I'm sure I'm going to get lost in there. So I'll probably enjoy the fall weather rather than when it was 90.
Well, you know who's getting really familiar with that whole trail system there is Diana Federman and Chris Fal, I mean, I'm sorry, Cindy.
Oh, yeah?
Yeah, you can elicit their help and you probably won't get lost. They're really regulars there now.
Yeah, nice.
I've gone a couple of times and I've never found the loop that brings me back out without going over the same area again. So I'm not, I'm not a good person to go with you. You might get lost.
Yeah, we have two people lost instead of one.
Okay, so I guess we're up now to open time for the public. Select Board uses a portion of its meeting for public comment. Is there anybody who'd like to make a comment? Okay, I don't see and or hear anybody. So are there any correspondences that we received directly to our attention?
Not that I use.
Oh, there was one letter that came in that we were CC'd on, but it was written to you. And that was a question about land up on Buchanan Circle.
Land at Buchanan Circle?
I think it was Buchanan Circle. Someone was interested in a town owns land across the street from her.
Oh, yes. I'm, I'm in the process of finishing up the research on that. It looks the preliminary research looks like it was taken in tax title. So it would be in, currently in the control of the treasurer. So if the select board had any interest in disposing that surplus property, the process would be a town meeting vote to put it into the hands or responsibility of the select board. And then the process would be similar to what we went through with 93 College Highway as far as the actual disposal for a bidding process.
Do you know offhand how big the parcel is?
I'm researching two of them and I'm afraid I will get the two mixed up. So I'll go back and I'll get all that specifics and let you know.
Okay, that'd be good because I mean, certainly that might be a funding source or it's what might be interested.
Let me just remind the select board that when you dispose of real property, yes, those funds come to the town, but by statute, they're supposed to sit in account and only be utilized to purchase other real property. So you're limited as to what you can use those funds for.
Okay, so what happens, like we, we have debt right now where we borrowed against, you know, CPC, for example, or we borrowed for land purchases. Would we be able to use the funds towards reducing our debt on previously purchased land?
I would have, I would have to go back and research that because all that particular scenario, it was, there was a specific methodology to how it was supposed to be paid back, but that's a, that's a good question. So I'll look into that.
31,000, 31,000 square feet.
Oh. Okay. Okay, so you'll get it back to us about that. And I'm just going to want to make sure we get back to the neighbor about that too.
I've actually exchanged emails with her a few times already, so.
I mean, I, you know, I'd be in support of getting this off our books. Success to 21,300.
Correct.
Yep.
And it can't be built on. It's in conservation.
Okay, so let us know, Ed, if you will.
Sure.
So we can decide what to do with that.
Does it have some kind of reason to have that?
It's not in conservation as far as being conservation land. It's basically wetlands that is the reason it can't be built on.
Well, it can't be built on. It's not in conservation per se.
No.
Well, it says, it says that it's in conservation.
Yeah, it was one of the pieces that it might say that, but it's not, that's a note.
So it sounds like we need a lot more detail on this.
Well, it says tax title, December 7th, 2000. We got the detail. It was sent to us in an email. Not a building lot per planning board, December 7th, 2006. It was taken in tax title. And then landline valuation section, it says it's in conservation.
Where did, where did you, when did that email come in?
Ed sent, or no, Crystal Kane sent it on September 14th.
Oh, okay, that was the original. Yeah.
She sent the land card. She sent the land card with it.
Right.
Okay. All right. So you can, you'll get back to us on that, Ed?
Yes. And there's another parcel someone had asked about that's, it's bigger than that one. That's why I didn't want to just jump out with my memory because I knew I'd get the two properties messed up.
Okay. All right. So if there's no further correspondence, that brings us to the end of the open session. We are going to go into an executive session. Master General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A, Number 3, discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation. If an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigating position of the public body, and the chair so declares. Police Officers, New England Benevolent Police Association. So I just needed a motion to go into executive session. We will not be returning to open session.
Did you send us that link, Ed?
Yes.
Yes, I did.
That's my email. Okay, I'll make the motion.
Okay, is there a second?
A second. Just tell me the date of the email.
It's the same, it's getting onto this one. I, I used.
Yes, it's the bottom.
It's the bottom of this one? Okay.
Yeah. Okay, we have a motion from John and a second from Francine. All those in favor?
Foul's eye.
Roll and die.
And Grodeni. Okay, so how much of a break would you like to have before we jump onto the executive session link?
Five minutes would be great.
Okay, so just after 9:30 then. Is that all right with everybody else?
Yes.
Sure.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks, everyone. See you shortly.
Yeah, all right.